I'll sit upstairs. The appointed hour has arrived for the possible town council meeting of February 7th, 2019. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anybody is recording the meeting, and if so, would they please make their presence known to me? I see none. Thank you very much. I'd ask for the roll call, please.
Counselors. Beeden Bender.
Here.
Crocker.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
That's 13.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for public comment. Anybody who would like to come forward and speak with the counselors, please feel free to do so. And I would like to remind the audience, if you are here to talk about the zoning expansion in the Highway Business District, that is a closed hearing, so this would be your opportunity to do so. Thank you.
My name is Linda Edson. I live in Marston's Mills. I'd like to speak about the rezoning issue. I'm very concerned about the whole situation, especially hearing that Mr. Crocker was reported to the State Ethics Commission for possible conflict of interest with fostering this and owning property, that you could make a profit from this change. Supposedly, you've removed these lots, but it doesn't show on the maps over there. This is a terrible idea, absolutely horrid. The Route 28 corridor is zoned the way that it is now to protect the corridor from this type of thing. Traffic is horrible. We don't need any more business in that corridor. What we need is to protect it from water, for the water, for the lakes, from estuaries. This all belongs on 132 and in the industrial park in Hyannis. Is there a traffic study? Who did it? Where is it? We need affordable housing. We don't need more business on the Route 28 corridor. The people who work in businesses in the town now struggle to find places to live. The youth moving up that want to stay, the seniors that are no longer able to live in their homes, they have no place to stay. So why are you rezoning for more business when you should be trying to take care of the workforce that we have here now? I hope the board sees this for what it is. It's not good for the planning of this town in the future, and that's why we have a planning board who recommended against this. Thank you.
Anyone else like to sign up, please?
Hello. Adam Hanson, Precinct 3. I just want to let you guys know, Country Garden offered two cannabis classes a couple weeks ago, and I think it's time that the town, you know, rethink their approach on the marijuana issue. I've been to the dispensaries off Cape. A lot of people have. The first two months, they made $24 million. I don't think we can afford to stand on our moral high ground anymore. Taxes are increasing. You know, we need a new source of revenue. Marijuana's not a dangerous drug. What else was I going to say? The Craft Cooperative Program that the state instituted would empower the citizens in this town to start businesses on their own in this industry. And I think that would be a great thing for this town to embrace the industry, open up the zoning to commercial, as a marijuana industry is a commercial. And I think the town should form a committee on cannabis to do research and find out what's best for this town. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please sign up.
Hi. My name is Eileen Hannan. I live in Precinct 2. I was here for a meeting in December on the highway business, the expansion, and came back on January 17th for another meeting, which was postponed because there weren't enough counselors present. But just before that meeting, I got a new map from upstairs here, and it had done away with what is now on this map, proposed new HP expansion. Was not on the new map that we got in January. And now we noticed that it's back on. So I'd like some clarification on that. All this on Route 28 from Old Stage Road down by the fire station, all that was taken out, and a piece over here was taken out, which I believe belongs to Mr. Crocker. But now it's back on. And if we're not going to be allowed to speak when it comes up, I'd like to know, you know, get an explanation of that right now. If anybody could do that, please. And again, we're against that expansion because of the traffic. Richardson Road, which is where I live, gets 18-wheelers down there, which it shouldn't. It's a country road, and the traffic is really ridiculous. So there again, we're not for the expansion. We have plenty of empty stores. We have too many empty stores. Fill them, and that'll help your tax base that you want. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward?
Hi. I'm Susan Sweet. For those who don't know me, I lived on West Main Street in Centerville for 71 years, and I own four lots. Two are in the proposed expansion district. One is the only undeveloped parcel, and it will remain that way for the rest of my life. Across the street, I have two on Long Pond. I'm not rich. The property has been in the family for almost 100 years before West Main existed. I believe in conservation and preservation, and I am trying to preserve historically-registered roundhouse. So just for clarification, I do have a vested interest in the expansion, but I'm not just speaking for myself. Since November, and this first popped up, I have spoke to a lot of people, and I want to convey some of their concerns and comments. And the biggest one I heard from everybody was traffic. But they mentioned noise. They mentioned the environment and water protection, safety, property values. These issues weren't addressed during the presentations, and people want to know what studies were done beforehand and what the results were. The council passed the amendment to text of the Highway Business Zone. And I did support some of the changes. I think we do need to make some changes, but I think two of them were really not good. The one that drastically reduced the lot size required, and some of the businesses there would now be allowed by right. I support special permitting. It gives each butter a voice. My family had a chance to speak on two occasions for special permits in our area, and we said like you did, why not? But until you actually are in the situation, you don't see how it exists. And we got one right, and we got one wrong. And I'm constantly reminded by a 4:30 a.m. wake-up call from the dumpster pickup at one of them. Some businesses are invasive, more invasive than others. By right takes away the say, any say or protection from the residents that would abut new business. The proposed expansion basically goes all the way down to Route 28 through the Calm Fire Station and beyond. And if you pass this, will it eventually keep passing until it's to the Mashpee Line? I picture Route 28 in Yarmouth on a rainy summer day. It's bumper to bumper. What do you think would happen to Route 28 in Barnstable in a few years if you keep adding business after business? Think of the people who live around the proposed expansion district. Their families with all ages of children, older people, retired people, et cetera. There are no big estates or mansions, just working people, some who are struggling financially to live where they do. These are people who cannot hire legal expertise to look out for their best interests. The Barnstable Town Council is their representation. You speak for all of them, all the residents of the town. And that includes Katua, Osterville, and Marston's Mills, who primarily used to get into Hyannis, is Route 28, Finney's Lane, and West Main. I believe business growth is necessary, but is this the best place and the best plan? I think this is an extremely important decision for the town. Believe the action taken today will dictate the future of Barnstable. I love Barnstable. I've been here all my life. Barnstable is a wonderful, charming, and unique town that many people want to come and visit. Please think when you vote about keeping Barnstable the way it is to attack tourists for years to come. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address us? Please sign in.
My name is Liz Riley. I live in Centerville, which I will be putting my house up for sale because I can't take what they're doing to our town. I have had people from off Cape come to visit the town, and all they can express is the traffic in Centerville. Since it's become a four-lane, it's a highway. I mean, the average speed is probably, I'd like to know, but my guess is it's 60 miles an hour when they can do it. Commuter traffic, it's not. It's a dead stop. I don't see where putting more businesses. People are avoiding that area. You mention that area, and they say, oh, I don't go there. I don't go through there. I try to get around it. You're not going to track people with businesses. You're going to, people, more, you know, people don't want to go there now because it's so mobbed with traffic. And it is true. The trucks that come down the side streets and my side street, which is Richardson Road, you look at that road, you can see it. There's nothing but potholes. There's nothing but torn up this, torn up that. I mean, I had a truck come, I'm on a corner of Gina Court and Richardson Road, and the truck came all, I thought it was going to hit a tree or two, because it came all around the side and around the corner and just was going. I don't know how fast it was going, but it was crazy. And it left these big ruts in the lawn. People walk. I mean, that's a family area. There are children, young children, and people, I think they're a little crazy doing it, but they walk on that road. They get their exercise, you know, and they're always jumping out of the way of a truck because they, trucks come through there. They shouldn't. They're too big for that. But also, we have the dumpsters. We hear the noise. You can hear, they've cut down so many trees that, and they're going to build more businesses. They're going to cut more trees down. And I'm not right on the line, a street over, and you go outside, and all you hear is traffic. You can hear that traffic constantly. It's almost like a train going by. It's not a little village anymore. And you're making it worse. If you're bound and determined to make it look like a city, just say that. You know? You want a city? Either move to a city, or if you're going to make a city, you're going to ruin the area. I think come 10, 20 years from now, you're going to turn around, and you're going to say, oh, it used to be nice around here, you know? But slowly but surely, you're adding this, you're adding that, you're building this. Now it's going to go three stories. Oh, who needs the sun to shine? You know, just block it with shade. I don't know. And people aren't going to come to these stores because of the traffic. Who wants to stop and have to get back out again? Think about it. Do you? If you, if you're stuck in traffic, are you going to really pull into somewhere to go to a store and then have to pull out? I don't know how many, have they done a study of the accidents there are? Since, ever since they put, they added on Bell Tower, and then they added on this, and then they added on that, and the accidents are brutal. That's all I hear is a fire department and the police department goes constantly in front of Bell Tower Mall, in Centerville Shopping Center. It's all because of the traffic. Now, how can you, how can you say, what are you going to do? How are you going to widen that now? Are you going to put six lanes? You can't just, it's like the bridge. Sure, put two bridges in, two more bridges in, but they still got to come to the Cape, and they only got one, a couple lanes, right? It's a funnel, and that's what's happened with the, I don't know why they call it a corridor. I have no idea. Now it's a corridor. It used to be a road. I remember when it was a road, you know? So I'm totally against it. The people that live around there are totally against it. Like I said, they, they walk, they bicycle, they even push kids in carriages on that road. Someone's going to get killed someday. It's amazing they haven't, but I think one child got killed a few years, about 10 years ago. But, you know, it's, it's crazy. That's all I have to say. It's crazy. It's not why I moved there. Maybe had some seen it when it was nice. You'd think twice about doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
I'm obviously being lenient with time, so is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us tonight? Hearing none, I'd close and ask if any of the counselors would like to respond to the public comment. Yes, Counselor Beeden Bender.
Thank you, President Crocker. First of all, I want to thank the audience for this incredible showing to town council tonight. It's great to see so many people interested in what's going on and weighing in. To, very quickly, to Adam Hanson's comments regarding a cannabis committee, I agree with you. I think that that would be the next step for this town council, to coordinate a committee to look at that on a longer-term view. But I really want to just primarily address the comments made by Ms. Edson, Eileen Hannan, Susan Sweet, and Ms. Riley. I agree with you. I have many issues with this as well, and I understand your concerns regarding the traffic. They're very valid. I live on Centerville Main Street, and there are cars that go flying down Main Street at 60 miles an hour. And, and so I regularly go down that corridor, as you, as we are now calling it, on a regular basis. And I, I agree with you. I believe that if we are going to be doing something more there, it requires a lot more thoughtful consideration. I think we do need to look at traffic, impact on residential communities, what that might mean for, for property values. I do believe that, you know, we owe it to our, our business folks as property owners to do right by them and the best that we can for them, but not at the expense of our residential communities either. So it's a balance. So I, you know, you just have my promise that I will be looking at this very thoughtfully, at all of those, those concerns that you have regarding impact on communities, traffic, and do we need this kind of development in, in all of these places that be, that are being presented? So thank you.
Counselors? Hearing none, I guess it's my turn. Thank you for coming in tonight. I know we have a great group for different reasons here as well, and I'm very grateful for that. I have to say, I'm a little surprised by Ms. Edson's comments. She calls me on a number of things, but didn't call me to tell me her disconcerned about this. I personally have picked up the phone and talked to the Ethics Committee on several occasions, as well as our own town attorney, and I am following every obligation that's necessary under the Ethics Committee, and I will continue to do so. That's about all I get to say on that one. As far as talking about the zoning on these roads and how these roads will be affected, you have to remember that Route 28 was laid out in 1928. And I, for one, am not anybody that wants to see it double-barreled or change its procedures or, or make it any different of a scenic route than it is to whatever corridor or country road it becomes at either end or what it is. So I don't know of anybody that I've ever heard suggests that Route 28 has to change its character significantly. When you talk about infill opportunities, which is what's in front of this board, you're really talking about the opportunity to get new growth dollars. And if you don't understand the impact of new growth dollars, you will only understand them if you live in other towns in our close proximity who are facing cuts all the time because they don't have the opportunity for new growth dollars. New growth dollars are the only thing that will help us with sewers, with road projects, and with the like. So this is just a discussion. This is a very thoughtful council. I'm sure there's going to be amendments to what's out there. The reason my parcels are on there is because you show them until this meeting, and then they get removed. So nobody's doing a bait and switch. They're in, they're out, they're in, they're out. I'm on the record, because it became much too controversial, that I asked Counselor Ford to make sure he moves them for removal, and that will happen. So everything I said will happen, and I won't be in this, I won't be in this theater at that time. So rest assured, you have 13 good counselors here. We all work as a group. We all work hard. We don't have to agree every time, but we certainly have a light of transparency and the need for transparency, and we'll be working to that end again tonight. Thank you very much. With that said, I would like to invite Ford, Main Street Clean Team collaboration. I believe in our presence tonight. We have the Bay Bridge Board members, Sue Rorschbeck, Elizabeth Worf-Bain, Kristy Joyce, Director of Fin-Fin and Bay Bridge, and Deanna Dupree, Assistant Director. Could you please come forward, please? All right. We've had a great program in last summer. It was a kickoff summer for you, and we asked you all to come in and tell us what we can do to hopefully maybe expand the program because we think we've been putting some good people to work, and we think it's been a very successful program. So we asked you to come in so we could hear from your side and tell us how you'd like to organize for this upcoming season. Who would like to take the helm? Please introduce yourself and get the mic going. Yellow light, please.
Green. Okay. I'm Deanna Dupree. I'm the Employment Specialist at Bay Bridge Clubhouse, and I want to thank you for letting us come in front of you to, oh, great, thank you. Thank you for letting us come in front of you tonight to speak about our program, Clean Team. Like you had indicated, this has been a program that's been a long-lasting program, so I'm going to speak a little bit about some of that history and a little bit about our program, and then I'm going to hand it off to Elizabeth Worf-Bain, who is the Director of the Hyannis Business Improvement District. We also have Sue Rorschbeck from our Board of Directors of the Friends of Bay Bridge, Kristy, and one of our members as well here. Clean Team is a collaboration between the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District, also known as BID, and Bay Bridge Clubhouse. The Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District promotes community economic development on Cape Cod by ensuring that Main Street Hyannis is a desirable place to live, work, invest, and visit. Paramount to their mission is the aesthetic appeal to Main Street. Main Street must be kept clean and vibrant at all times to keep its competitive edge against the big-box stores and the online retailers with visitors and residents alike. Bay Bridge Clubhouse is a community of individuals who recognize the impact of mental illness on its membership. We strive to create an environment that encourages growth through employment, education, housing, civic engagement, and meaningful relationships. One of the primary functions of Bay Bridge Clubhouse is to help our membership build their confidence and skills in order to become involved in their community and return to work. Programs such as Clean Team have benefited some of the most vulnerable citizens in our community by providing them the opportunity to practice real-on-the-job skill development, communication skills, and socialization, all of which they may have not been given the opportunities to do so in the regular working world. Members challenge themselves and overcome barriers by working with staff members that act as job coaches and managers. Members are supported and trained on a one-on-one basis to ensure that they are trained on how to do the job correctly and consistently. When a member has been trained and can do the job independently, staff members take a backseat. However, they're still involved and can be contacted if there are any issues that arise to help in solving any problems. Members are encouraged to keep the staff at Bay Bridge and BID apprised of any times that they may need to take some time off, and in an event that they need to do so, there is absence coverage. Another member will do the job so that the job can still be completed. The local business owners on Main Street show their appreciation and gratitude to the members for helping them make Main Street a beautiful, warm, and welcoming place to visit. This atmosphere of support from staff and the community creates an environment conducive to growth and a desire for members to want to do more and be more. This second chance at a life of purpose and a sense of belonging in the community can help move a person forward in their path to recovery from mental illness. Members of Clean Team are invested in being a part of the Hyannis community. Members take pride in giving back to their community. Members want to see the community grow and flourish. The purpose of Clean Team is to create an employment opportunity and enhance life skills for Bay Bridge Clubhouse members while assisting in the continued renewal, economic development, and maintenance of Main Street. For providing this much-needed service, members are paid a fair market wage of $12 an hour for keeping Main Street clean and enhanced. Clean Team started as a small group of dedicated Bay Bridge Clubhouse members cleaning up gum and cigarette butts from Main Street to improve the image of downtown Hyannis. Over 15 years of operation, Clean Team has become known for so much more. We now help preserve, protect, and enhance the community around us by building partnerships with the local community and the local businesses. Additionally, we restore civic value by planting and watering the flowers in front of the local businesses, cleaning the street sidewalks, gutters, bumpouts, and flower planters of trash and leaves, painting the kiosks that house the maps of Main Street, delivering the maps of Main Street to the local businesses, cleaning up the beer cans and nip bottles from Main Street sidewalks and the planters inside of the front of the local businesses. from Main Street sidewalks and the planters inside of the front of the local businesses, removing dog feces from the sidewalk, removing remnants of car accidents from Main Street, clearing the trash from the North Street parking lot and behind the JFK Museum, removing overflowing trash from the barrels that sit along Main Street, communicating to the Barnstable Police Department the community service officers where and when hypodermic needles have been found, and helping in the creation of the holiday wreaths that adorn Main Street during the holiday season. We are looking to create projects that not only help our membership gain the necessary skills to be productive members in the community, but we are looking to expand our services to help the community. Bay Bridge Clubhouse and BID are always looking for out-of-the-box ideas to get involved in the community that they live in. Some of the expansion ideas include, but are not limited to, window washing services for the local businesses, gum blasting services to clean up the gum from Main Street sidewalks, maintaining the gardening areas along Main Street, cleaning up all the cigarette butts from Main Street, creating tangible art projects that can adorn Main Street during the holiday seasons, and managing more of the administrative tasks of Clean Team, such as scheduling the members for work. With the creation of more projects underneath the Clean Team umbrella, there are more opportunities for job creation and more services that can be provided to the community. With the expansion of this project, it will help the town of Barnstable in its plans to create an aesthetically pleasing Main Street that is culturally vibrant, exemplifies local charm, and is family-friendly. Local businesses will also benefit from this expansion. Local businesses on Main Street range from restaurants, art galleries, framing, clothing, accessories, books, music, jewelry, convenience and grocery stores, florists, hardware, and locksmiths, specialty shops, the JFK Museum, and soon to be the 255 Main Street residents. These local small businesses will be able to save their time and resources to focus more on their business than the maintenance of Main Street. The residents that live on Main Street will also be able to walk out of their building to enjoy the clean and vibrant Main Street. In addition, there are many local events that occur throughout the year on Main Street, from Hyannis Open Streets to Shop Local Days, Safe Trick or Treating, the Christmas Stroll, the Father's Day Car Show, Summer Events in the Green, and the Long Table. With this expansion, there are more opportunities for Clean Team to help the community by maintaining Main Street prior to and after these events. This program is a win-win situation that not only helps the members of Clean Team gain confidence and skills, while helping them be active participants in the community that they live in. It helps provide a necessary service to the community at large and the local business owners. To date, Main Street in Hyannis has been a large part of the Barnstable community, and in recent years has been the subject of revitalization, reinvigoration, and economic development. Over two hundred businesses that line Main Street have benefited from Clean Team in terms of economic development and gain from the cleanliness of the street, attracting tourists, and gaining more positive attention from the residents. Clean Team has had the privilege of helping over a hundred adults with disabilities in entering the job market by giving them invaluable life skills, such as organization, time management, following directions, responsibility, socialization, and teamwork. Clean Team began over fifteen years ago as a collaboration between the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District and Bay Bridge Clubhouse, and was originally called Clean Sweep. There are many successful members that have worked on Clean Team and have gone on to other endeavors. Here's a quote from one of them. "Most importantly to me was that I got out to work Clean Team. I was unsure of myself, I was petrified. My self-esteem was extremely low. I did surprise myself as I moved on to a transitional employment position, then to supported employment positions. My self-esteem started growing. Mass rehab was next, then school. Ten years as a clinician. My confidence, from Clean Sweep to being an RCC Coordinator, I swept my way to recovery." Victoria. After this quote was taken from Victoria, she was then promoted to being a program director. Her small beginnings and humble beginnings began with this program, Clean Team, that we are talking about today. She is just one of the many individuals that have benefited from this program. So I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you, and I'm going to hand it over to Elizabeth Warf Bane, who can speak a little bit more about the expansion ideas and some of the financial aspects of this program.
Thank you, Deion, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Deion. So I guess we're here, really, to explain what Clean Team's about. It probably hasn't been well-known throughout the town exactly what, how the program works, but I think it's a really fine program that has a lot of facets, as Deion so beautifully explained, and, you know, a lot of meaning for the community. Step back. Can we get excited? Thank you. So, what we'd like to ask for is maybe even more. That's hard for me. Some more, maybe, partnership with the town and the BID to bring back the Clean Team. We had a federal grant years ago that helped run the Clean Team at full capacity, and when we lost the grant, the BID took it on because it was so important and meaningful from our own budget, and we'd love to have the town partner, and we could bring it back to where it was, to full potential, and we have some more ideas for streetscape improvements. So, I didn't know if you wanted me to get very specific, or we just... Okay, so what we'd ask, we do, we used to have over $20,000 with the federal grant, the CDBG grant, probably $25,000 average, and last year we did about $10,000, and we're hoping to have it match with the town, another $10,000 to work this grant, and we have some really neat ideas. For instance, for spring, we want to do pansies, and, you know, that requires a lot of labor, we have sixty-five planters, so we would love to have, you know, be able to really encompass more that we could do on Main Street, and we could do more with our Christmas decorations, and more with our fall decorations, and more with our, helping with our events. So, that's what our ask would be about.
We'll go to questions after I have a chance to hear from Sue as well.
I'm too far away, can you hear me?
I have been involved with the Bay Bridge, Friends of Bay Bridge, for at least fifteen years, and every time that I go to Bay Bridge, to the clubhouse, I am so impressed with the members and the work that is done there, and helping people recover from mental illness. The clubhouse model is going back to work is something that helps people get better. And the Clean Team is something that, if you're strictly talking about the members and not any of its other benefits, it really does help people get back to work. And they learn skills, they feel great about being back at work, they work hard, they take pride in their work, and they take home a small paycheck, which is really, really important. In addition, it's really good for the BID, because all the business owners have a clean street and a decorated street, and hopefully, an even more decorated street. I love the idea of the pansies. I love it when you go someplace and they have pansies planted in the string, makes, just makes me feel good. But the BID and Bay Bridge have been really good partners, and the area has been clean, it's good, so it's good for the businesses, but you know what? And it's good for the visitors, because they like to see a clean area. But when you think of the number, of the visitors, and they see the Clean Team folks in their shirts that they're very proud to wear, and they know that the town, you know, that the town is probably employing people who might not otherwise be employed to do this work, and the number of people that come to visit here, who have someone with mental illness in their family, I am sure that they look at the Clean Team and they say, "Isn't that great?" In addition to looking around and seeing all the good things that the Clean Team does. So, this is not just good for the BID and just good for the Clean Team, it's really good for the town, so I hope that you all will be able to support us a little bit more.
Can I hear from Kristi, please?
Thank you. You know, I think most of my colleagues up here have already been very articulate and kind of explaining this program, but I really, I think it does come down to, you know, you talk about a good deed and a good deal, and this is very equally both. These transitional employment positions that we provide for the folks at Bay Bridge, it is extremely impactful in their lives. These are individuals, as folks have said, that have maybe not had an opportunity to work before, maybe they've had a while of, a period of time where they haven't been to work. It's the chance for them to kind of have the support that they need from our employment staff, to get out there, start to build their confidence, start to get their feet firmly on the ground, and as I think the example Deion gave of the one woman who worked herself through school, became a clinician, you know, was able to get back to being a full-time employee, we see that as something that's very common with these positions, that we have folks, they just need that little start to kind of get out there and do the work. The thing that's really wonderful about Clean Team, that's very unique from kind of our other transitional employment positions, is this fact that it is something that is also not, it's not just giving people a job, but it's a chance for them to be a part of their community, because they are going out into the town, and they're taking care of the town, and they're making it beautiful, and the folks who live in the town are able to see them doing something productive that's meaningful for them and their lives as well. And we've seen members that that's been very impactful for them, to feel like they are a part of the community, they're doing something that the community values. So it is one of those programs, obviously, there's the benefit to the town in that the street is being cleaned, and this work is being done to make it something that's very appealing for the folks who live there and for the tourists, but it's also a really great opportunity for members to really feel like they are a part of this town. You know, this is something that they're giving something back to a community that they care about, and they're able to contribute in the way that they are capable of at that time.
Thank you. And we had one of the members of the team there tonight. How are you?
Okay, I wasn't expecting you.
Oh, that's okay, whatever's comfortable for you.
The only thing I could, I was, I had had many roles at the clubhouse.
Hello?
Yep. There we go.
I've had many roles at Bay Bridge over the years, and I was there instrumental in the creation of Clean Team about fifteen years ago. And the only thing I can say after all of everything, you were beautiful, by the way, was they're selling themselves short. They should be asking for $15,000, not $10,000. That's about all I can say.
Well, we saved the, we saved the best for last, there you go. Thank you. I would ask our manager, Mark Els, to come forward for a minute, please. Would you tell us how we interact to get this program off the ground, how we funded it, and how you see the funds going forward? I'm not asking you to put a mark on it this time, but how it will come forward to us as the council in the near future with the budgets.
Yes, and thank you, Mark Els, Town Manager. Historically, we were able to work with the Business Improvement District in Bay Bridge to, through a CDBG grant, offer support to the program they've described. As we moved through the program, it lost eligibility because of the type of reimbursement that it was, and therefore, that funding source went away. We've had a nice working relationship with Bay Bridge, especially recently, and actually met this week with them regarding some of their future plannings, including this issue. So, there's certainly the opportunity to seek funding sources to support this program. There's also opportunities as the individuals who participate in Bay Bridge reach a point for maybe initially seasonal employment, but other, that we would work with them on all levels, so that they can be successful in the programs they offer. I'd certainly go back after discussions with the leadership and our finance director to look at any and all means of providing financial support.
Thank you very much, and please, as it comes forward, we're interested, obviously, in the stipend that goes to the actual people that come out and help us, so we would like to know in the future how the money would be allotted as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions of my counsel? Yes, we'll start on this. Counsel Beanbender?
Thank you so much. Thanks for sharing the work that you do. I had no idea of what was done, and Elizabeth first told me about it the other night, and having you speak here tonight, I think, is great, and it's very obvious, the great work that is being done. I had a couple of questions. First, I want to say to you, the comment about fundraising, I'm a professional fundraiser, and you're absolutely right, you always ask for more. So, these are just some sort of general questions for Bay Bridge, and just kind of curious, how many individuals have gone through the program overall? Also, what are your annual operating expenses, and what are your revenue sources? And how do people find you? How do they learn about the club, and how do they get involved?
I want to answer in terms of how many people have gone through. We'll go, there are a couple of people are probably going to be the data points for this, but...
Over the fifteen-year period, we had a hundred individuals go through this program. We've had some individuals that are more in that transitional employment position, so they need some extra help, so we go out as a job coach and give them the necessary skills to learn the job and do it consistently, and learn some of those life skills that I had addressed earlier. Also, some of those individuals are more independent, and sometimes find their way through some of those special projects that we had talked about, where they are completely independent, and they work directly underneath the auspices of Elizabeth and her crew as well. So there's different levels of where individuals are at, we meet with them where they're at, and we help them go through the process of being on more of that transitional period to being more independent.
I can speak to where the people come from, in terms of how they connect into the services.
Your mind, Krista?
Sorry, sorry about that. Have to practice. In terms of kind of how people connect with Bay Bridge and then connect with the work room itself. So, we are funded by the Department of Mental Health, however, an individual does not have to be attached to DMH in order to be able to come and receive our services. If an individual is an adult eighteen years and over, and they have a psychiatric diagnosis, they're eligible for the club. So, they would be able to self-refer. Some people are referred through their own kind of doctor's clinical support, other individuals might come through DMH. Once they have been kind of assessed as appropriate, you know, for that program, they're eligible for Clean Team and for all of our employment services. The only requirement for somebody to work is that they want to work. So if they say, "I want a job," we will meet them where they're at, as Deion was saying, regardless of kind of what their current skill level is or barriers are, and that's where this sort of a position, this transitional, it's the most supported type of employment, supported employment out there. You know, they side-by-side will work with folks and help them kind of for as long as they need, until they can do that work. So the only eligibility for this program is just that you want to, you want to do it. And then you might be able to speak more into the...
Terrific. Yes. Counsel Levesque, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had an office on Main Street Hyannis from 2001 to 2012, and one of my favorite spots, I'm a big fan of the Beatty family and the Sunrise Restaurants, and Sunnyside Restaurants, excuse me, and so I, many times, I would walk by, people cleaning the streets, and I just, my first thing that came to my mind was dignity, that these people who were maybe had, you know, had a certain struggle in life, or certain circumstances, that this was an opportunity for them to have some dignity and give back to the community, and I really think it has value. Every day, I mean, you see the same people, and they look straight, look you straight in the eye, they ask you, and I know what they're doing for a living, and look you straight in the eye, say, "How you doing today?" And I say, "Doing great, thanks so much for asking, and doing a great job." So it was a pleasure for me to walk by them on a daily basis, and I was right above Ben and Jerry's Ice Cream, and so I saw them, and even befriended a few of them, and maybe even bought a cup of coffee for a couple of them at the restaurant. So, I think it's a value thing, thank you so much for what you do. I know, I know it's a labor of love, so I appreciate that.
Working my way back. Anyone else on the side? My counsel's on the side, I'll start on the end. Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kudos to all your great work, and again, it gets down to dignity. I remember one day going by one of the Green Team members, and I guess I was talking to him for a little bit, and then all of a sudden, with great wisdom on their part, they said, "I have to get going, I'm on duty." And I thought, I was so impressed with their sense of responsibility, so it was great. Maybe somebody could answer this for me, but when we walked down the sidewalks, there's all these little black marks, and I find it hard to believe, but I've been told it's gum that's been thrown there and walked over, and that makes that black, those little black marks all over. So, maybe working with you, you could help us to develop a plan so that we could... So maybe working with you, you could help us to develop a plan so that we could, and your Green Team could speak to this, that there be signs throughout our Main Street that says cigarette butts, disposal of gum and spitting at the big circle and the cross, that we don't do that on our Main Street. So it's just a thought, kind of expanding our work together.
Thank you for bringing that up. We actually own a machine for a while, and we're bringing it back out, a gum buster machine, with some Clean Team and some high school students that will help us get out there. And we have T-shirts that say gum busters. So you'll see them soon. Yeah, it's a tedious machine, because there's about 50 billion gum black spots on Main Street. So it's a labor of love, as you say.
Yes. Council Dagwan?
Thank you for this presentation. I learned a lot more about Baybridge from your presentation. Dion?
Yes.
Dion. But I have also attended some of your, they do a fundraiser every year where they have the spaghetti dinner, and they do such a wonderful job there. People, you know, come back time after time for the spaghetti dinner, and I, that's been one of the things that I've attended and see, see them at work and how proud they are as they serve everybody. And just to continue, I just hope that, you know, I support this group and hope that they will continue to do the things that they've been doing in the past. I wanted to ask also, what businesses do they work with on Main Street? Do they interact with any of the businesses on Main Street?
They work for the bid.
For the bid, mostly.
Yeah, in the Clean Team capacity in general. What we offer is, works with their level of how they can work. It's usually pretty simple but repetitive tasks, and that seems to work for them and what they actually like, because it's very predictable. So it's win-win in that sense. And it's even, I've said before, win-win-win, meaning they get work that they can handle, and it's work that often people can't find workers to do things that are repetitive, the same thing every day, it's really hard to find people who like that. And then the third win is, again, the civil, the civic engagement that occurs from all of this, because there's such a camaraderie of feeling part of the community and keeping them all each together. So that's.
Can I say something?
Yep.
But one of the important things about the clubhouse is employment. And so if there are any Main Street businesses out there that would like to employ a Baybridge member, that with support or without support, a graduate of the Clean Team or not, please come forward.
Yeah, and we've brought them to events where they've helped other businesses, but we actually oversee it, Dion and myself and a few of us, because some of them, at the beginning, do require some, you know, some aid, right?
Yes, and also to speak to some of the local businesses too. Baybridge this year just celebrated its 30th anniversary, and some of the local businesses on Main Street actually sponsored that event. We had everything from Puritan clothing on Main Street to Just Be Yoga as well. So with this program, it is something that the local businesses see our members out there, and it takes away some of that unknown, it takes away some of that, what is that place on the corner of Main Street? It really shows the heart of our membership, and it makes the community love our members and adore our members as much as our members love and adore the community that they live in. And so Clean Team is just one aspect of that admiration, pride and love of the community. So it is that kind of first step if they haven't been involved in the community, and then doing things such as going to the pasta dinners and working the pasta dinners, seeing the neighboring businesses and talking to them, and really creating a partnership that has long-lasting effects.
Follow-up, you all set? Council Dagwan? Thank you. Council Cullen? I'm sorry.
No, he's not next, he's waiting for me.
Council Cullen, please.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight and telling us about the program. I'm always really critical of the burden that Hyannis bears with regard to the most vulnerable people among us and how we are the center for managing all of it. And it's so awesome to hear about giving back, a partnership between services and bid especially, which, you know, is a struggling thing with the internet being what it is today and our corridors of 132. I just think it's a really important model to perpetuate, and I really appreciate you coming in tonight. I did want to follow up, I don't think Councilor Bean Bender's question was answered regarding funding, what your budget is, your operating budget, if you wouldn't mind answering that. And then I also wanted to say that I hope we can get funding in time for pansies, because it's right around the corner. So just the operating budget would be great, if we could hear what that is, please.
So the operating budget for the Clean Team itself, not just for all of Baybridge?
I think it's for Baybridge, thank you.
Oh, for Baybridge?
Oh, for all of Baybridge. I want, yeah, so I'm going to have to go, I don't have the exact number in my head and I don't want to put out the incorrect number. Okay, I apologize. It is, I have a general sense, but I just don't want to misquote.
Council Snell?
Thank you. I'll ask a specific question. Do you have an operating or a ideal operating budget for the Clean Team?
Yeah.
So the Clean Team operating budget would be 25,000, 10 from us and 15 from the town.
Well, I want to echo your earlier comment, Elizabeth, that I think it's a win-win-win, and I would be fully in support of the town being a partner in this program.
Council Rapkis, any?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, and I've met a couple of the folks out cleaning, and I think it's great. And I think branding is important to make sure that everybody knows that they're part of the Clean Team. My question is a little more specific with regards to the bid. Is this the only organization or the only Clean Team that the bid uses to keep Main Street clean?
No, we have a maintenance person, two of them, actually, and part-time maintenance people.
So two, part-time. So a little bit more into the finances, what's the operating, I know all the monies that the bid collects from the business owners is used to maintain Main Street and plant flowers and whatnot. So what's in the bid's budget for cleaning? Just 10,000 of that?
No, the bid has a maintenance budget, so we have a hard maintenance budget that we use on planters. For instance, we spend $9,000 a year on the 65 planters.
What's your budget for maintenance of cleaning for those two part-time people?
Oh, for the part-time people, it's 20,000.
So 20,000 plus the 10 that you donate to Baybridge?
Yeah, plus the 10.
So 30,000 is what you're committing to keep Main Street clean?
For labor. And then after that, all the parts we have is another about 60,000 between the planters and the decorations and light pieces and, you know, machinery. We have a truck.
Okay.
So all those parts together.
I was just looking to the actual cleaning of the streets, but thank you for all you do and for your presentation. And I didn't get your name, the gentleman that spoke.
Robert Young.
Robert Young. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Plays a doctor on TV. Any other council questions? Hearing none, thank you very much. Excuse me one moment, my vice president, John Flores, would like to ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, a great presentation. I think all of us that drive down Main Street, especially on the East End, see what's going on in that facility, and I think you guys do an absolutely terrific job. You're dealing really with probably one of those vulnerable populations that we have in town. And I'm just curious, if someone isn't necessarily successful as part of the Clean Team program, are there alternative kinds of opportunities for these folks so that they have that feeling of self-worth, that feeling of success? Because I want to be, hopefully, as inclusive as we possibly can be in these types of programs.
Absolutely. So the core of the clubhouse is actually work. That's the intent of when people come in there, they participate in what we call a worker today. So they're partnering with staff in the actual running of the club. So some folks, if they're not quite ready to kind of go out into community employment, that might be their first place that they're starting. They're helping us run the snack shop, they're baking lunch every day, they're helping us with our bills, with everything, anything that's kind of the running of the club they're doing. If somebody wants to then move out into more of a community-based employment, we have a variety of positions that are open for them that we call transitional employment, so, or supported employment. So if one position isn't the right fit for somebody, they could try another. And that's the idea, you know, it might be that someone goes through three or four transitional employment positions before they feel ready to move on to supported employment. Someone else might just do one and they're ready to move on. So we try and provide a very broad spectrum for folks. But that worker today really is the core of the club in terms of helping people who have been out of work for a while get back in and be in a safe place that they can try things that they maybe haven't tried in an environment that's supportive and start to kind of build their confidence and their skill set.
Well, again, a great program, and I think, you know, at the end of the day, you're giving people a feeling of a newfound self-worth, and that's such a critical element of what it is that we need, not only here in Hyannis, but in Barnstable and society in general. So I commend and applaud what it is that you're doing. And I will support the 15,000.
Any other questions, Councilor? Hearing none, thank you very much for coming forward. We've been waiting to get you in, and thank you for coming forward and presenting such a strong case on your behalf. Appreciate your time. please.
Good.
Thank you for coming forward.
I'm well, thank you. Mark Els, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's update for the period of January 18th through February 7th. We are proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Calendar for FY 2020 as scheduled, and I attach it every once in a while just as a reminder, and you can take a look at it, because it's in this package this week. We've scheduled a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2020 fee changes on February 12th at 10:00 a.m. here in this room. The hearing will be televised on Channel 18, and those who cannot attend are encouraged to submit their comments during, I typically try to give a period after, I'm going to give a 30-day period following the hearing. And then approval for the proposed fees would proceed on March 19th, 2019. So for anybody who can't make it to the meeting, please view it, it'll be on the website, and then you'll have time to provide any emails or letters or whatever means you choose to communicate with us. Following our progress meeting on January 7th with Fish and Wildlife to discuss the future potential to siting water supply wells on the 250-acre parcel owned by the Commonwealth that directly abuts the Hyannis Public Water Supply, the town desires to continue working with Mass Fish and Wildlife to finalize an agreement that would enable the town to install public water supply wells on that 250-acre Hyannis Ponds Wildlife Management Area. We submitted our recommended proposed public water supply well locations and associated withdrawal information on January 18th, 2019. Mass Fish and Wildlife responded on February 7th, and that as a result of the government shutdown, USGS was delayed in proceeding with their review of the most recent information from Barnstable. Once a response to the most recently proposed scenarios is received from USGS, Mass Fish and Wildlife anticipates moving forward with their review. So I'm thinking, they were shut down for 30 days, so I'm thinking we're 30 days behind at this point. But we'll continue to, we have an active dialogue and we'll keep you advised as this progresses. I reported last meeting that the Mass Department of Environmental Protection had scheduled a meeting on January 16th, 2019, in response to a petition from the Conservation Law Foundation and Toxic Action Center. DPW Director Dan Santos gave oral testimony at the DEP hearing in Boston on a petition by the Conservation Law Foundation requiring the DEP establish drinking water standards for PFOS and to immediately adopt the health advisory level for PFOS at 20 parts per trillion. The current advisory level is 70 parts per trillion. Adopting a 20-part-per-trillion standard would have a significant impact on the Hyannis water system. Director Santos testified that the state should proceed under their current system to evaluate new maximum contaminant levels on the basis of public health studies, cost-benefit, available treatment technologies and sampling protocols. He further pointed out that DEP needs consistent policies and procedures regarding how sources of contamination are regulated and enforced to support its review of the PFOS drinking water standards. I gave you a link to the information that was presented at that particular hearing. A testimony was taken under advisement by DEP. Since that meeting, we have heard informally that DEP is considering adopting a health advisory standard of the 20 parts per trillion during the summer of 2019. We've expressed our concerns as to the timing for compliance with the proposed standards. We expect further discussions in the coming weeks regarding this matter. We are planning accordingly for potential changes, and we'll keep you advised as more information becomes available. On January 22nd at 3:00 p.m., I attended a Board of Health hearing to further discuss the proposal to eliminate or modify the interim estuaries regulation. The hearing was continued to June 25th of 2019, and I'll keep you advised on any progress relevant to that. And I would point out that that hearing and the presentation given and comments and discussion that occurred are all available on our website. So please continue to watch that and participate in this discussion. I've attached primarily just to share with the council documents that we've provided to Will Crocker on housing and economic development priorities, as well as a summary of information related to the funding of broadband in the downtown Hyannis area. The broadband information was provided to Senator Julian Seer for his recent discussions on the matter. I also just provided them to Representative Whalen, to keep him abreast as we move forward with these many funding initiatives, some already in place, some proposed for the future. I didn't include in my report, but I want to note that, another issue, on Monday, February 11th at 5:30, the Planning Board will host a second Community by Design workshop in the Town Council Hearing Room, right here. This workshop will present the results of the Visual Preference Survey and previous stakeholder feedback, as well as model residential designs for the Hyannis Study Area. So that's an ongoing effort with our Planning and Development Department and our Planning Board. So that next meeting will be Monday, February 11th here at 5:30. On February 1st, I attended a meeting of legislators, state agencies and municipal officials to discuss the implementation of the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. As previously discussed at your last Town Council meeting, chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, an act regulating and ensuring short-term rentals, our specific discussion focused on the Act's establishment of a management board and its duties relevant to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. Within the Act, in Section 20, it states that there shall be a Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board that shall shall be a Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board that shall consist of one person to be appointed by each board of selectmen or town council in each municipality that is a member of the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. Barnstable is one of those. Provided, however, that an appointee to the board of selectmen or town councils shall be a member of the representative appointing authority, town manager, town administrator, or municipally-employed professional staff. The Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, the Executive Director of the Martha's Vineyard Commission, and the Town Manager of Nantucket shall be non-voting ex officio members of the board. Each member of the management board shall serve for three years and until a successor is appointed and qualified, and each member of the management board shall be eligible for reappointment. Each member of the management board appointed to fill a vacancy on the board shall be appointed for the unexpired term of the vacant position. I think it's very important, given the content of the discussion that I participated in on Friday, that our Town Council take this establishment or identification and appointing of a board member and their participation, if you so choose to, in this management board and move quickly relevant to it. I would encourage that. The members of the management board shall select a member to serve as the chairperson and vice-chairperson for a term established by vote of the management board. And the Cape Cod Commission, in consultation with the Martha's Vineyard Commission, shall provide administrative and technical support to the management board and may be compensated for its associated costs by vote of the management board. I underline the next section because it was a point that I came back to several times in trying to clarify the duties of the management board. And then following that, I'll provide an action that I've taken relevant to it. The management board's duties shall be limited to determining the method of subsidy allocation, including but not limited to, an equitable distribution among participating municipalities consistent with the revenues deposited from each municipality into the fund and to ensuring that monies from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund is spent only for the purposes in Section 19. Now, Section 19 identifies the role of the DEP here in identifying eligible costs that can be considered to be used by, or to be, yeah, to be applied from this fund. So basically, DEP says, yes, those are eligible projects. After much discussion on the intent of this section in the Act, the section I underlined in this memo, I have requested through our Finance Director that our Bond Council provide an opinion on the duties of the management board. Specifically, does the board simply review funds deposited from each municipality against equitable redistribution of said funds to the communities from which the funds were generated, or does the board have greater discretionary authority to redistribute said funds? So basically, is it more of a counting measure that the board is there, the board reviews, okay, Barnstable contributed X, Barnstable gets X back? Or do they have discretion over cumulatively how those funds are distributed? There was much discussion on this. I kept coming back to the Act and the statement in the Act, which says that that's the way that it works. So I'll await bond determination, and I will share that, rather, determination from our Bond Council, and I will share that information with you. I also sent a letter on January 23rd, it preceded this meeting, to the Department of Revenue regarding meeting this particular section, this particular act. And I've attached the letter that I've sent. The letter requests that the DOR establish a reporting system that identifies the Cape Cod and Islands Water Pollution Fund excise tax raised in each community as it will be critical in order for the management board to carry out its responsibilities. Now, that is assuming, in the way that I've read this, that basically the management board just gets a report that says, here's how much has come in, and here's the eligible projects, and here's how it goes back out to those communities who put it in. Again, if it becomes a more discretionary role of the board as to how that money is redistributed, I would like clarification, you know, and we've asked our Bond Council to take a look at this and provide us that feedback, because that was the opinion of the group that I was interacting with.
Or the opinion of your leadership. Thank you.
So at this point, that concludes my update to the Town Council. If you have any questions of me, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but I also would like to conclude with asking our Director of Finance, Mark Mill, to come up and provide the Town Council with an update on a recent bond issue that we've done. So if you have any questions of me, or if you want to wait, either way.
Any questions of the manager? Yes, Counsel Levesque.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for your presentation. I really appreciate you going to bat for this type of thing. Basically, we should be getting back what we're putting into and what we're collecting. I'm sensing that there may be a little bit of resistance with that, and I appreciate you, the fighting, the good fight, and making sure things really come out fair and just for the town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for your report.
Yes.
Just back on number one, you mentioned that we're going to have the fees reviewed for the fiscal year 2020. Could you remind us what fees or what category fees are included?
Sure, absolutely. There are fees at the Youth and Community Center. There are fees with our Water Pollution Control Division. There are fees with our Water Supply Division, and there are fees related to our Solid Waste Division.
And at this point, are you proposing modest increases in those fees for next year?
Each respective division of the department will present the various fees, and they vary. Yes. The fees are based on, in the case of Public Works, full-cost recovery of the services provided. In the case of the HICC, we're looking at what market rate ICE would provide in the marketplace, and we try to recover. That's not, that doesn't function as a full-cost recovery enterprise fund, so we would be looking more to what the market would bear there.
I have one other question.
Follow-up.
This was not discussed in your report this evening, but several months ago, when we, as a council, made a decision to disband the Renewable Energy Committee, there was some concern that where would be the conversation about the town's participation in the Green Communities Act? And I believe you said that that would be something staff would be discussing, and I just wanted to, maybe not this evening, but in a future report, get some update on where we are as a town vis-à-vis the Green Communities Act.
Absolutely. I believe that the Building Commissioner is scheduled to go before that committee at their next meeting, so it's a timely question.
So that's, that would be the new Infrastructure and Energy Committee?
Yes.
Yes, we have a liaison. Counsel Beaton-Bender, you may want to give her an update.
So just to reiterate Town Manager's point, that we are meeting on February 11th, on Monday, and the meeting's at 5:00 p.m. at DPW and Green Communities. That sort of initial discussion with our Building Inspector, Mr. Florence, is going to take place at that point. So we're just starting that conversation and gathering information, seeing what objections there might be, you know, what we need to investigate further, you know, maybe bringing in some specialists. So we're just starting that conversation, so if you'd like to join us, you certainly can. But just letting you know.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Beaton-Bender, you're being far too modest. Could you tell us what you're doing to keep the community, the committee balanced so that they also address sewer advance, which is the other half of their process?
Right, exactly. I mean, the committee is tasked with, well, when we saw the remit for the committee, it's energy and infrastructure. So anything you want to put in either of those buckets are potentially under the purview of the committee. So right now, I would say we are in sort of a controlled chaos moment, which is trying to figure out, how are we going to identify what are the priority issues? Because we obviously can't tackle everything that goes into either of those buckets. But for example, you know, Vineyard Wind, there is revenue coming in from Vineyard Wind that we could look at various needs of the town and have discussions as to where we might want to spend some of those monies. But we also have, you know, recycling issues, and we have solid waste issues, we have wastewater, you know, anything renewable. So we need to determine as a group where we need to set our priorities, how we're going to focus, and then move forward. And Green Communities is just one piece of that, so.
Thank you. Hats off to Counsel Beaton-Bender. We were, I attended the meeting with her also, and the meeting got totally dominated by Green Communities, and that certainly wasn't the idea of putting together those two committees. And so Counsel Beaton-Bender stepped up and said there would be opportunity lost if they didn't focus on some of these other issues. We talked about replacement equipment, which is energy equipment that needs to be looked at, additional solar arrays, there was all kinds of discussion. So it's really something that I think the liaison is going to have to work to make sure they balance their agenda to address and have a chance to have some impact on the upcoming budget. If not, they'll just focus on a single course, and they'll miss a lot of opportunity. So, anybody else? Yes, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, I just want to go back to your comments on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. I think it's a critical element that the money that Barnstable puts into this fund that we get out, as my fellow Counselor Levesque has suggested, my understanding, when this was all being debated and planned back both in the House as well as the Senate, that was the intent. So I hope that's how this eventually will be interpreted. And I struggle also with the fact that it's one person, one vote on this particular group. And Barnstable, being probably the largest community, it's not weighted in any way, shape, or form like the Assembly is. And I think that's going to perhaps work against us in terms of making sure that we're getting our fair share. When we look at the amounts of money that are projected and where they're coming from, Barnstable's at the top of the heap in terms of the money that's going to be going into this fund. So I want to hope that, you know, as you continue these meetings, whomever we appoint as our liaison, that it's critically important that we make the point that we want to be able to take out what we put in. To me, that's the only fair and equitable way to run this operation. Thank you.
Yeah, just in response to that, and it's the reason I underlined the language that I did, in my reading of it, that is what it says. So that was left to interpretation at the meeting. And I think it's because of the statement in there, "not limited to." So again, I've asked our Bond Council to look at it and give it back to us. I think that, you know, short of modifying the Act, we're bound to the Act as interpreted. So I think that, you know, we will be able to work with our fellow communities. We always have been, and I'm confident that we will be here. I think it's important that we move quickly with a decision on an appointment. I know that we had tentatively agreed to hold a next meeting, even if communities haven't appointed anybody, somebody, an unofficial representative can be invited. And we were hoping to do that in April, because one community has, only one of the 13, has appointed someone. And we want to make sure that this discussion is, you know, we get that interpretation, clarification, we become functional, because I think if it isn't the way that it reads, and we have more fiduciary relationship to the trust, meaning how the money actually gets distributed, I wouldn't want a legal interpretation of what responsibilities a board member carries to be able to have that sort of authority over that type of fund. That's not something that we would regularly manage through a simple appointment, I don't think. It's a little more complicated, I think. So I just want to understand it as we proceed, because it's new. And I think the other communities do as well. That's all.
Well, I just want to be sure whenever that law is ultimately interpreted, whomever is responsible for doing that, that we take a position that whatever Barnstable is contributing to that fund, we are getting back for our own wastewater-related kinds of services.
And I can say that that's the way that I've interpreted what's been written in the Act. So I can say I believe the Act was written that way, in my interpretation. And that's what I'm asking, that's the position I've taken, and that's the review that I've asked for to clarify that.
Thank you. For the last clarification, that is also what he knows leadership's position is as well. So we have been represented, that we want him to continue with that, just so we're all clear, that we don't have to think that that isn't the position we're all pursuing at this time. You want, anybody else?
Yes, I'd like.
Yes.
Oh.
Counsel Rob Krasny.
If I could, Mr. President, seeing as the manager has urged that we act on this quickly, I would hope that at our next meeting, we could have an agenda item so that we can make some, or have some discussion about who to put forward. And I'm going to recommend that we put someone either from DPW or from our Finance Department.
Thank you. That is coming forward. We're waiting to hear how Bond Council addresses this. That might have a difference of who we put up there to fight on our behalf. So we do not have to have a representative there until April. I suspect we'll be voting this in May. We may work an interim appointment, we may work a long-term appointment, but it'll be for reasons that will be very specific on the day we vote. So please bear with me, it's on the top of my agenda. Counsel Heber.
Thank you, Mr. President. So staying on the same topic, just a reminder to all my fellow counselors that tomorrow morning at 7:30 at the Hyannis Golf Course, we are going to have our monthly Selectment Counselors Association meeting. And the topic of discussion really is about the wastewater. And so just pointing out, even if you didn't make reservations, I want you to be there. You're welcome to be there. But on the other hand, what people are trying to get aggressive, and we're going to have question and answer, and we'll have more explanation and more speakers on this, but the public really needs to know how much, how important this is to us and to our plan. We're talking about spending millions and millions of dollars. And so this water trust is only going to help us to a certain degree. It's like a leverage that will help us to move our programs forward in terms of our wastewater control and protecting our water supplies. So this is a very important piece of legislation for us, and some towns can opt out if they want. It's beyond my rationale of why anybody would opt out of this opportunity, but this is one way for us to, we're not trying to play tax rental units for the sake of having a trust fund. We need every dollar that can be raised to help us to meet our problem of wastewater right now on Cape Cod. So I thank you for your strong efforts.
If I might respond to just a portion of those comments?
Certainly.
I think that communities that I've heard that are thinking about, and that was also discussed last Friday, thinking about whether they are going to participate, one of the reasons might be that they don't participate in the State Revolving Fund program because of the size of the community and the scale of the typical project that they've seen their community faced with. Now, smaller, like when other communities on the Cape have gone forward with wastewater, they've accessed other funding sources, and people regularly call us and will say, why didn't Barnstable get that? Well, we're not eligible for those. We would have pursued them had we been eligible. We have been an active participant in the State Revolving Fund, the SRF program, since it was created back in the early 90s, been very successful with it. That is how these funds will be administered. So for a lot of communities, they're saying, we've never used this. Is it something we will use? There are also other reasons, but that was, that was a topic of discussion, so, yeah.
Any further counseling discussion? Mark, the second part, please.
Yes, Mark Mill. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council. I'd like to share with you some very positive financial news the town received yesterday. We sold $10.5 million of bonds yesterday to finance 16 capital projects as part of our fiscal year 2018. our fiscal year 2018 and 2019 capital improvement plan. We received nine bids. They ranged from 2.62% all the way down to the winning bid of 2.52%, a lower amount than our last two bond issues, even in a market right now that we're seeing rising interest costs. So it was an excellent bond issuance for the town of Barnstable. The, prior to the sale of the bonds, Standard and Poor's, our global rating agencies for municipal bond credits, affirmed the town's AAA bond rating with the highest, which is the highest rating attainable, again with a stable outlook. The rating agency cited the town's very strong economy, very strong management with strong flexible, or strong financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, strong debt and contingent liability profile, and a strong institutional framework as its positive credit factors. Finally, I would just like to thank Deborah Blanchett, Town Treasurer, who put hours in gathering all the documents and assembling the paperwork necessary for bond counsel and financial advisors to do the bond sale. And again, congratulations to the council as well for maintaining that strong financial commitment. Thank you.
Any questions of Treasurer? I have a couple, if I may. I had a chance to read the bond rating, very positive, as we would have expected. They do talk about our population swing, they do talk about our ability to rely on a particular industry. And then they also had, in the last page, they had what they called the outlook about if we did not continue to get new growth dollars, we would have some problems coming our way. They also talked about our ability to fund the retiring cap. Could you go over those two items? Because so far, they say we got an eye on it, we had enough money to pay our retirement benefit portion and that we've been stepping up with that reserve. But it might be something that becomes quite more of a discussion for us as we go forward.
Yes, it's a, it's a good point. They do, they do mention at the end of the rating profile that it's a two-year stable outlook with currently a very strong economy. If the economy does start to falter and we stop seeing that new construction that we are experiencing right now, for example, Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank's new headquarters, that that could potentially change that outlook to a, from stable to unstable, which could ultimately indicate that we're going for a bond downgrade. On the contingent liability for OPEB and pensions, they're keeping an eye on that. That's an issue nationwide. And they're keeping an eye on that closely, making sure that communities are doing something. They realize that communities can't finance 100% of that liability immediately. However, those communities who are doing something, as we are here in Barnstable, by putting close to $600,000 a year away into our trust fund now for the OPEB liability, and we have been fully funding our annual pension li, payment every single year with that liability being amortized to 2037, at which point it'll be fully funded. So those are two positive, steps in a positive direction. They're keeping an eye on it. We need to continue with that commitment to building trusts funds for those liabilities and fully funding that pension assessment. Communities who don't do that, and there are many, they will suffer with bond down, downgrades in their ratings essentially, which will lead to higher borrowing costs.
Thank you. It's really quite impressive when you hear our Director of Finance talk to us always about our need to cover the debt of retiring individuals and how we set that fund up just a few years ago and how we've been moving in that direction. But it's also equally as impressive how you hear the new growth dollars coming from him, but also coming from New York State where they rate your bonds. So we're not making this stuff up. This is what we need, this is what they're recognizing that we're doing right, and this is the reason we're able to run in the AAA status. Thank you very much. Great report, congratulations. I would ask the council's permission, since we have an unexpected guest that, under not-anticipated issues, that I ask our representative Timothy Whelan to come to the mic and speak to us tonight if he has something that he would like to share.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to come here before the council today and to speak. And, Mr. President, the reason I am here in attendance today is I'm here with my friends, the Omens from the town of Dennis, and I'm here with them, standing with them with, they'll be coming up before this board very shortly to discuss Project Forward. Project Forward is a project that...
Could I ask him one minute? I'm sorry, Timothy. I'm going to open it up for them and they're going to be the first slot on the thing. We never really have a chance to see you, you're a haberdashery guy for sure today, you're very cash. So I figured, I figured perhaps you'd have something to report from the State House or something that you're working on that would be a regional concern to all of us.
Oh, yes.
I promise I'll invite you up for the Dennis deal, but that's an actual article on our agenda.
No, 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 that's okay. And I appreciate the direction on what exactly it is. And again, thank you again, Mr. President.
Yes.
I, what we had happen over the first two weeks, we got sworn in on January 2nd.
Yes.
So from January 2nd forward, for the next 17 days until we got to January 19th, I believe it was, was a period of bill filing. And after we got past January 19th, up until this past Friday, was a period of co-sponsorship. So it's been a very, very busy month of January up in the state legislature. I'm pleased to say that I filed a number of bills. I filed, I believe it was a total of 25 bills, and one that related directly to the town of Barnstable was one that Vice President Flores brought to me, and it relates to tree cutting up on Route 6A. And I've been in contact with Vice President Flores as well as with Ruth Wheel here from your town council to discuss with her the bill filing. And that bill will shortly be reported out to the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. And we're going to be looking forward to that bill advancing and trying to get that done here for the town of Barnstable. I was also a co-sponsor on a bill with, that Representative Will Crocker had filed. This bill was filed after the tragedy that occurred in, here in Barnstable on April 12th with the loss of Sergeant Cannon, and it relates to the transportation of canines in ambulances, Nero's bill, it was reported widely in the press. This bill, and I have to give, I can't give enough credit to the fire service across the Commonwealth, but certainly here, in this case, it was the fire department, the comm fire department that came to us and spoke to us about their issues as, on that day, April 12th, were trying to get Nero, to get him treatment to save his life. They had to take Nero and they had to put him into a police cruiser. And it was a difficult task and they used that method to get him down to, I believe it was down in Buzzards Bay, where they got him to the veterinary hospital. We're looking forward to action on this bill as well. And this bill has been getting an awful lot of support across the Commonwealth. And when this bill passes, and I'm sure it will, it's very strongly supported, we can take pride once again in knowing that that bill originated from the advocacy that was received right here from the comm fire department and right here in the town of Barnstable. So looking forward to getting committee assignments on the other side of the aisle. On my side of the aisle, committee assignments have already been given. I'm proud to let the council know that I am the Cape and Islands representative, once again, on the House Committee on Ways and Means, which means I'll be one of the people that's helping to build the budget every year. And you can rest assured that I will use every, every tool in the toolbox to direct as much state funds back here to the Cape and particularly here to the first Barnstable district in the town of Barnstable going forward. Also, I was recently assigned to, as the ranking member on the Joint Committee on Public Service, Public Service Handles, all the issues related to public employees' retirement. We're talking about OPEB benefits. You're right in my wheelhouse there as well. So we'll be having some, I'm sure, some spirited and interesting discussions I'll be having with members of this council going forward, as well as being assigned to the Joint Committee on Higher Education. And that was a request to go on to higher education. We're trying to get more and more support here on the Cape. Access to higher education, as we know, for our students here on the Cape continues to be an issue. And it's one of the things that I've brought up continually to the Secretary of Education. Where I grew up in a neighborhood in Worcester, I walked to Worcester State College, walked. It was a five-minute walk from my house. Where I live in Brewster, where we have students here that live in the town of Barnstable, it's about a 70-mile drive to get from here to get to Bridgewater or to get to UMass Dartmouth to get a four-year education. We need to fix that and we need to expand services that we have up at Cape Cod Community College and try and get some more four-year offerings down there, as well as expand the services. Right now, Bridgewater State has a presence in the town of, in the town of Yarmouth over at the old Lawrence C. MacArthur School Building. We need to get them to expand their offerings there as well so that our students, our young people here on Cape Cod have just as much access to quality public education as residents do over on the other side of the bridge. So with that, I'll open up the floor. If any members of the council have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, take my best shot.
Counselors, we never get this guy. What do you, what do you got? Not that he's not around, I know he's around. Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Lavec.
Thank you for the work that you're doing with the four-year college. I do think that's important, that our students, having, I have four kids, eight to 16 here, and having to do that. And I actually went to UMass Dartmouth, I'm a course air, and I finished my first three years there when I lived locally, but I finished my last, to finish my degree, I needed a year and a half, and I actually commuted to get that done. And that was a task, work full-time and go to school full-time to finish that. So I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. My, Counsel Lavec, my wife got a PhD from the same school and I watched her for four years commute three nights a week out to, out to Dartmouth. So I understand the commute and again, it's, it's a burden and in many cases, it's an immovable obstacle to some of our students down here and it's just not right. So we're going to continue to make that argument with the Secretary of Education, continue to make the argument with the Commissioner of Higher Education. We need to expand those higher education services here for all of our students, without question, sir.
Yes, down the end, please, Counsel Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you.
Good to see you too, Counselor.
So just sticking on higher education for a moment, I've had long discussions with the president of the community college, and what we need down here is water sciences, we need clean water certification to run clean water plants as well as wastewater plants, things that we desperately need. We keep talking about attracting new industries here on the Cape for economic reasons, but I'm very, very concerned about food, energy and water security. And I met just today with Aquagen, which I know that you're familiar with.
Brian Bragg, that's me, yes.
And there's some pretty exciting stuff coming on. I know that they're working hard with Yarmouth, the high school, to put in a whole laboratory kind of concept there.
Very exciting.
So, and now the governor is talking about Massachusetts being a leader in the future meeting our water needs as well as our food needs. So I'm hoping that our delegation can bring some, some big bucks to bear on Cape Cod to build these industries that we're just perfect for. Thank you.
Full agreement with you, Counsel Hebert. And as a matter of fact, the delegation, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM with President Cox and with the staff up at Cape Cod Community College. So you're making a very timely argument, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Cullum.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to see you as always.
Mine, Counselor.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention the one thing that I'm always, always asking for. I was wondering if there's any, any appetite on your part at all to examine the Dover Amendment? Don't smile at me.
I knew exactly what you were going to talk about, yeah.
And defining the educational component of that. It's, it continues to be a burden for our town and has been for years, and I'm looking to get out under the yoke of that and get this town out from under the yoke of that. And I know that there's a burgeoning interest in other communities that share the kind of social responsibilities that we have here. And I wondered if you had any, your fingers on the pulse of that at all? Thank you.
So my fingers on the pulse to the extent that the bill was once again joint filed by my colleagues, Rep. Will Crocker, as well as Rep. Carlos Gonzalez, who's a dear friend and one of my classmates coming in, in the 189th General Court. Rep. Gonzalez is from Springfield. And I'm happy to report to you that I'm a co-sponsor of the bill as well because I support the town's efforts going forward on this. I understand it. And again, we see, I mean, it's an issue in Springfield. I grew up in Worcester, I saw it happen right down the street from my house, some of the issues. And I understand them, I've seen them my whole life growing up. So it was unsuccessful last term, and I think what we're going to have to see is, we're just going to have to see, this is not going to be a one-term fix, Counselor. This is going to be something that may take two, three or four terms to get to the point where we've gotten the message across of the great need to even some of the most set-in members of the legislature and try and get them to understand. And a strong part of making that argument is going to continue to be municipal leaders like yourself and other members here from this council, who I know are very strong in their support of the bill. And we're just going to need to see more of that coming from Springfield, coming from Worcester, coming from other areas that are directly impacted by the lack of any controls as they exist right now.
Thank you very much for, for speaking to it. And if there's anything we can do, please let us know. You know, we have a committee, as you know, the homelessness committee, which focuses on this, and it's, it remains an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, living over here, just over here. And in the thick of it all. So, I mean, maybe we should be reaching out to our, our representatives from Springfield as well and just throwing our weight behind it, maybe to get the, get the message out. I think that might be...
In addition to the series of telephone conversations we had on this direct link, Counselor Cullum, last session, I'm looking forward to our continuing conversation going forward on this. And yes, without question, let's keep that communication going forward. And if myself or Rep. Crocker or Rep. Hunt in any way can help connect members of this council with your counterparts in the city council and the city of Springfield, connect you with Representative Gonzalez, Representative Williams, I'd be more than happy to do whatever I can to make those connections. Yes, ma'am.
Vice President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Representative. First and foremost, I thank you for promoting, if you will, the amendment to the Seneca Highway Act, which will allow for those folks who live on 6A to maintain their trees and not have them cut down so willy-nilly, if you will.
Thank you for bringing that to me, Counsel Flores, and thank you for your advocacy.
Yeah, at the behest of Everso, so I think it's, that's going to be a good win-win for everybody involved. Secondly, I would echo Counsel Cullum's comments about the Dover Amendment. Having been on the homeless committee, you know, I look at how some of the other communities interpret that, in particular Cambridge. And Cambridge, which has its own image in terms of its politics and where it stands, manages to get around that somewhat. So that might be a little bit of a model that we might take a look at. And so with all of that being said, you know, thank you for your, for your work and your service to not only Precinct One. Tim and I basically share constituent hours a third Friday of every, of every month, three to four at the Sturgis Library. So although some of you might not seem on a regular basis, he and I do, so.
Yeah.
But even though he represents the North Side, he really works on behalf of the entire town, so I thank you for that. And one other comment, I'm very pleased that you'll be on the Higher Education Committee now being a member of the Board of Trustees of Cape Cod Community College, appointed by the governor a year ago. I'm very concerned in terms of really the lack of funding and resources that have been put forward, not only for Cape Cod Community College, but all of the community colleges as well as the state institutions relative to capital improvements, building better and more current facilities. So that's an issue that's been longstanding, so obviously anything you can do along that road would be welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Bean Bender.
Thank you, Rep. Whelan, for coming. It's great to see you. Just, just curious, we've been, you may or may not be aware, we've been having some robust conversations regarding a cell tower that's been proposed to go up in Centerville. And it really just points to or raises a larger issue of the lack of control that municipalities have over telecommunications. And just wondering, at the State House, are there any conversations happening around this? You know, where municipalities, are there some steps that municipalities can take to sort of regain some of that control? But more so, because this is under the purview of FCC, our greatest hope is that from the State House it can push up to the federal level. So just curious if those conversations are happening at this point yet.
With so, Counsel Bean Bender, right now, we are so early in the start of the new session. There were over 6,000 bills that were filed. I haven't had a chance to review all of them. What I can tell you is that one of your great, one of your greatest advocates that you have for matters like this with municipal control and municipal authority is the MMA. So I don't even think MMA has had the opportunity to go through all the bills that have been filed, to digest them, and then come to us in the State House, those of us in the legislature, say, "Listen, here are our priorities, here's what matters to our municipal officials, here's what, here's what really matters to our municipalities." What I would recommend is, and I'll certainly do some digging to see what I can find, particularly as it relates to cell towers, what I would recommend is maybe reach out to MMA as well and let them hear your voice and let them know that this, this is a priority to you and this is a priority, that you... and this is a priority that you want them to take to leadership in the House and leadership in the Senate. And that's probably going to be, in addition to the individual work that I'll be doing and I'll communicate with my colleagues as well, that would probably be another step in the right direction to try and get those who make a lot of the decisions in leadership leaning in your direction.
Any other questions? I guess it's my turn. Please let me dispel any rumors about you not being around. I see you all the time, and I'm very grateful for your service.
No, but, but I, but I don't make it here until your meetings very often.
I'm grateful to have you tonight. I have only three things, that's three less than Tom Brady's Super Bowl rings, okay? You're going to hear a great amount of what the town of Barnstable is attempting to do, to do a regional sewer development program with Joint Base Cape Cod. We're going to be advancing a program because we, we have the ability to clean water in Hyannis, but we don't have the ability to get rid of what we clean. So we're really looking for outlets, and Joint Base Cape Cod seems to be a good match for us, and we need some help when it's time.
Of course.
But we have to put together our regional packs, we have to keep everything moving. But I assure you, that's really high on the burner. Number two is what comes at us every June, and that is the Department of Environmental Protection and their PFOS discussion. They come out and tell you that they dropped the PFOS, they want immediate change in the testing of the public well supply for PFOS. They announce it in June, and everybody says Cape Cod's got dirty water in June. Talk about a devastating blow to the region.
Right.
And they have told us now they're going to do it again this June, and they're going to drop it to a very unreasonable rate such that we can't even use the blended water from Yarmouth because their PFOS numbers aren't right. So we're going to have to talk about this, we're going to have to get them to put it to some date appropriate so that it doesn't devastate our whole region, and we're going to have to ask for an appropriate period of time for everybody to come into, into compliance. They're talking about instant compliance.
Sure.
We're very fortunate in the town of Barnstable, we'll be able to stockpile, go out, buy these off, they're not off-the-shelf cleansing and filtration systems, and we'll be ready, but we're going to have to clean Yamas water to blend it with Hyannis water. This is, this is really a huge issue, and it's a black eye that everybody likes to run up the flagpole in June. So there's just no reason why it has to be announced in June, and there's no reason at all why it has to be instant compliance when you're taking it from one extreme to the other. And my third and my last is the one that you heard our town manager talk on, and he's had great discussions with us, and this is about the Water Management Board. Absolutely a disgraceful process is about to go forward here. We sent out letters before we went up to that first meeting. We told everybody we were concerned about how they intend to split up the money. They tell everybody that all the towns that you represent are some of, out of the top five towns producing revenue, it's three of your towns.
Yes.
And, and they're talking that, oh, we're going to, we're going to decide where this money goes, when it goes. They're not talking about returning it to the district from where it comes. Absolutely unacceptable and a sham and, and, and a theft of sorts.
In that regard, Mr. President, I mean, I, I can assure you, I, I, if I could call the shots, if I were the king for a day, I would be able to restructure that legislation, probably answer a lot of your questions, but I'm, we're so outnumbered up there in many ways. I mean, there was, there was a concern that I had going forward when we were having the discussion on this, where I wanted to see the votes broken up, much as they are with the Assembly of Delegates, so that a town like Barnstable, a town of Falmouth, Yarmouth, and Dennis weren't going to be outnumbered by the Capes further down, you know, further down Cape where the population's well under 1,000, and it ended up being what it ended up being.
Well, we're just asking to put you on the line. This is like the Patriots game. You're going to be on the line, we're going to have a super-duper quarterback by the time we're ready, and we're going to ask you to come work with us on it.
I'll be your Marcus Cannon.
Okay. It's the biggest, it's the biggest mistake and the biggest theft and turnabout that I've seen in any written documents in a long time, so we're going to ask you to come forward and work with us on it.
Imagine watching this thing go forward, Mr. President, we're going to have to watch how this evolves. As the, as the town manager got up here and stated, there were interpretations that he made of what he read, and I made pretty much the same interpretations that he did based upon what I read. But, but let's face it, that there are a couple little holes in there as well that are probably going to result in maybe there being some case law. And when they talk about these cases, what they always talk about is legislative intent. And I've been in here before, speaking to other state organizations as a member of the legislature, about what our legislative intent was going forward, what the conversations we had in crafting legislation were. And I know that when we were going forward, that the intent that we had in crafting this legislation was that money coming out of a community into the fund, an equal amount would come back to the community, that same community, and that would apply to all 15 towns on the Cape.
Yes.
And I will remain available as long as I'm standing to testify on behalf of the town of Barnstable that that was our legislative intent.
Yes. Well, all the projections that have been done on this particular program of taxation put Barnstable, number one, on contributing, and then there's a group of people that would like to move the money that comes in from Barnstable somewhere else than bringing it back to Barnstable.
I'll stand with you. I'll fight that fight.
Totally unacceptable. Thank you for your support. We'll be working on this.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. And I'll invite you up in the article here.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I'll invite you up in the article from Dennis here.
Please.
I'll let you be the first speaker.
Perfect. Thank you.
For taking the grill. Thank you.
And Representative of Cape Cod, look, tonight without the suit, looks fine.
If I knew that I was going to have a speaking role, I would have made the time to get home and get a suit on, so thank you very much. If you noticed my shock when the President announced that I was here and asked me to come up to the microphone, I had four steps to say, okay, what am I going to talk about?
Representative, you never had a loss for words.
Thank you.
So that concludes our town manager communications in that particular non-inspected good fortune of ours, and thank you again, State Rep. I'm on to action on the minutes. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to present the minutes from the January 17th, 2019 Town Council meeting, for consideration as written.
Do I have a second? Seconded. Any amendments, any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the minutes as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, please record that as unanimous. Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commissions, reports, correspondence, and announcements. I'll start on this end, please. Councilor Beedenbender?
Thank you, President Crocker. I have two announcements and one comment. Just want to remind everyone that on February 13th, Wednesday, the bone is going to be at the Doubletree taking public comment from 5:00 to 8:00. This is in regards to Vineyard Wind. It is an information session. It'll be in regards to the environmental impact statement. If you haven't read it, go to the Vineyard Wind site, go to the tab that says Documents, and you'll find the impact statement right there. So whether you're for or against, if you want your voice heard, that is a night to come forward to the mic and, and express those concerns or support. Also, great day, on Thursday, the 31st, I was with Rep. Crocker at the Community Health Center in Centerville that just opened up. It's a new urgent care center that accepts walk-ins regardless of your ability to pay. So this is a great service for our community. It offers mental health, dental service, urgent care. Currently, it services 2,300 patients in this community, so a great addition to our, our town and, and service to our community. So that was a great, great thing to happen. And then I just want to make a, a thank you to the Barnstable Police Department. Last week, or actually earlier this week, it was Tuesday night, I was babysitting for a friend in a community off of Lakeside Avenue in Marson's Mills, and the dog was barking, and I, I went to get the dog, and I noticed somewhere between eight and 10 very serious-looking men walking up the street. And at first I thought perhaps they were ne'er-do-wells, and I was wondering if I should call the Barnstable Police Department because they were walking with intent in single file to this one house, when I realized it was the police department. And so what happened was the police department was surrounding this house, it was a search warrant, they ended up arresting a man in there for child pornography. And I will say that what was really sort of took me aback was watching them going to this house, not knowing what they were going to encounter, and looking around vehicles, looking in the RV, looking in the shed, and then going into the house and realizing, because this was the same neighborhood that Sergeant Gannon was murdered, knowing that our, our officers with the Barnstable Police Department go into harm's way every single day. So I just want to say thank you to them for the tremendous service that they give this town and the hard work that they do every day.
Any other counselors under the heading, please? Hearing none? Yes, I'm sorry, Council? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to remind folks, especially those living in Precinct One, that on Wednesday, February 13th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Harborview Room, which is part of the Codex Complex, we will be having a meeting to discuss a number of issues. Jermaine to Precinct One, in particular, the Streetscape Project, the flooding that's been ongoing down at Millway, as well as the proposal of some new lights up on Finney's Lane and Kids Hill that have created a lot of conversation, a lot of debate. I've invited a number of different folks to come in, address whoever might be coming to the meeting that evening, including President Crocker, Town Manager Mark Gels, Police Chief Matt Sonnenbend, our local Barnstable Fire Department Chief Frank Pulsifer, Frank Pulsifer, and finally Dan Santos, too, who'll be speaking to those particular three issues. So February 13th, 7:00 to 9:00, I see some Precinct One folks out in the audience. Look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'll turn to the orders of the day. Councilor Hebert, could you start me off? Page four, 2019-075, Old Business Public Hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2019-075, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $250,000 for community housing creation by friends or relatives with autism-related disabilities, Inc., otherwise known as FORWARD. Mr. President, this is a public hearing. Roll call.
Thank you. May I ask Mark Milne, Director of Finance, to come up and do the rationale, please? Do I have a second here also? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Milne, Director of Finance, Town of Barnstable. I would like to recognize Catherine Garofoli from our Community Preservation Committee, who is here this, this evening to answer any questions you may have for the committee. Friends or Relatives with autism and related disabilities, FORWARD, a nonprofit organization is seeking approval from the Town Council through the Town Manager for CPA Community Housing Funds in the amount of $250,000 in support of the construction of two purpose-built homes for eight adults with autism on five acres of town-owned land in Dennis located on 131 Holcomb Rock Road. Capabilities will operate the facility and provide 24/7 onsite services for the residents. The project is certified by the Department of Developmental Disabilities, and future residents will be selected by the Cape and Islands DDS Area Office, which includes Barnstable. This $250,000 CPA funding request represents a portion of the total $2 million budget, with 1.6 already committed by Dennis Community Preservation Committee and two Mass grants and private giving. At the 2000, in the August 27th, 2018 Community Preservation Committee meeting in Barnstable, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the application of FORWARD on its merits and to authorize the Chair to consult with our legal department for the development of adequate security measures for the town's legal interest in the property. Entities donating to this project include private donations of $147,000, which have been secured, state grant funding of $1 million pending Barnstable's commitment tonight. Dennis Community Preservation Committee has voted to $500,000, and that's been secured by their annual town meeting. Barnstable's commitment tonight for $250,000 that we're seeking. Yarmouth Community Preservation Committee was asked for $100,000 contribution, and they ultimately approved $120,000, and that's pending their May town meeting. Mashpee was asked for $100,000, they approved, their Community Preservation Committee recommended or authorized $50,000, and that's pending their May town meeting. And Chatham Community Preservation Committee has contributed $50,000, and again, that's pending in their May town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we open the public meeting and make you the very first speaker at the public meeting portion? I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing process. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public process. How are you tonight?
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Catherine Garofoli, Member-at-Large for Community Preservation Committee, Precinct 10. This is my first time doing this. I'm standing in for Chairman Lindsey Council, who usually presents to you. But I'm here to present the members and representatives from FORWARD, that's the Friends or Relatives with Autism and Related Disabilities nonprofit in Dennis. Again, as Mr. Milne had stated, Community Preservation Committee in Barnstable did vote unanimously to put this through. We're very excited to partner with FORWARD as a nonprofit and as an opportunity for us to collaborate with another town across the Cape to address an important issue. So I'm going to turn it over to the representatives here for your questions.
Thank you. If you'd come up and sign in, please? Please state your name.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Omen, President of FORWARD. This is David Kaplan, our managing director. I also wanted to let you know that we've brought many of our friends here tonight with us, many of our board members. I want to thank Representative Wayland for coming. We didn't tell him that he was going to be asked more questions. Representative Wayland has been involved with us since shortly after he was elected in 2014, and is always, has always been there for us, including tonight, and it looks like we owe you even larger tonight after this. I also wanted to say that we've brought with us tonight the Area Director of Developmental Disability Services for the Cape and Islands area, Rick Avicki, and a representative from Capabilities, which will provide our services. So we started this process with Barnstable CPC last January in 2018, and in the year that's transpired, that we've been through the CPC process, many things have changed for us, significantly that we were awarded a $1 million grant from the state, again with the help of Representative Wayland, but also with the help of the Department of Developmental Services. They certified, certified our project and recognized the need for it, which allowed us to apply for the Department of Housing and Community Development grant money. A year ago, in, in our application, our project was billed at $2 million. It's, as the year has gone by, it's now a $2.4 million project. And so while we have been here looking for CPC funds, we, as you can see, we've also gone to successfully Yarmouth, Mashpee, and Chatham. FORWARD has truly become a, a great example of how state and local government and communities can work together on a project like this. We would not be here today without the help of Housing Assistance Corps, who came on early to first serve as our developer and is now our consultant, and will help us administer this million-dollar grant, where it's, excuse me, where a small nonprofit backed up by a, a much larger group with HAC, and, and they have been very helpful in this process throughout. Capabilities, as you know, a longtime agency for the developmental disabled in, on the Cape, will provide the group home services, the day-to-day services with their staff, and, and they will work with the Department of Developmental Services to select the residents that live in these two homes. So I, we understand that there are questions about the selection process, and I'm sure there are other questions as well. This is a regional project, and the residents will be selected, will be Cape and Islands DDS clients. So, and whether they come from Dennis or Barnstable, whether the homes are built in Dennis or in Barnstable, there is no guarantee of where the residents will come from. So if these homes were built in Barnstable, we could not guarantee... could not guarantee that there would be Barnstable residents in it. Although, we think there's a very high likelihood of that just because of the numbers of clients from, from Barnstable who would be eligible for this home. So, for, for us, the question is, do you support more, more housing for people with autism who are in need of these facilities? Do you have anything else?
You're welcome to add something if you'd like. We may invite you back once we call this a public hearing for some specific questions from the council.
Okay.
Well, I, I would say that Kathy-
Would you please get to the mic? Thank you. And repeat your name, please?
David Kaplan, sorry.
Thank you, David.
That Kathy hit most of the highlights, but I can say, we've been working on this for four or five years. It's a very long-term process, and the opportunity is really now to make this all come together with all the investors, other investors in the project, particularly the state and the Dennis CPC and the town of Dennis. So, really, we're, we're very close, and, and your funding is certainly key funding, and, and we'd like to get it going. And again, and Rick maybe could speak to this, it really doesn't matter what town the facility is in. Everyone is going to have equal weight based on need, no matter where their residency is. So, we just want to emphasize that point. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I promised State Rep. Whelan that he'd have his chance, so please come forward, Tim.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I started working with Project Forward, as Kathy Omen had mentioned. I started working with them shortly after I was elected. We had a meeting up in my office, and it included members from the Project Forward Board, as well as members from the Department of Developmental Services. And over the past several years, what we've been able to do is we've been able to work with DDS and with FORWARD and all of the stakeholders. And FORWARD has been able to bring in all the stakeholders throughout the community to come, to come forward with a really viable project that's going to deal with a very strong and severe need that we have here on Cape Cod, and that is dealing with adults with autism-related disorders. Because as we know, once they reach a certain age, they turn twenty-two, the help just stops. I was talking to, before the meeting started, I was talking to some of the members here about an experience that I had as a child growing up, where there was a gentleman that lived down the street from me, who was in his sixties, who had severe autism, and he lived with his parents, and it was just absolutely the saddest thing in the world to see when his parents passed on. There were no services available for him. The states recognized this. The states, in, in this particular case, has come forward with one million dollars in funding that we got through DHCD because of the hard work that Kathy and her board have put forward to try and get this funding. In addition, the state has also come forward with twenty million dollars additionally. I believe it was a year before last, we brought Kathy and her board up to meet with members of the governor's staff and with DHCD, and lo and behold, there was twenty million dollars added to the line item for what they called a turning twenty-two line item. So we, at the state level, recognize that we have this great need. But the great need that we have is particularly felt here on Cape Cod, the available housing, supportive housing for adults on the autism spectrum who require the supportive housing. There's a, there's a severe lack of it here on Cape Cod. There are going to be eight units here, and these eight units, when you look at them, as Kathy was mentioning, they're going to go to clients who are served by our local district of DDS down here. Now, when you look at the models, just when you look at the population going forward, Barnstable here on the Cape has such a large percentage of the population that I, I think it's safe to say that very likely at least one, if not more, of the occupants of this home are going to be residents of the town of Barnstable. And it, it would be nice if, if, if that could be considered going forward. I know that this is going to be a difficult decision. This is, this is money that comes directly out of the pocket of our taxpayers, and we have to be very judicious in how we spend it. But I can assure you that, and, and offer you my strong opinion, this is a project that is very much worth funding, and I just ask you to please take that into consideration in your deliberations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? If we're repeating what we know, it's okay. There's a great group of fan base up here, so you're doing well anyway. So, feel free, since you have come in to see us, though, to please speak. Anyone else? Please do. Please do. Please sign in and state your name.
I will. My name is Doria DiMano, and I'm from Dennis. I am the Chair of the Dennis Planning Board. I have a, a real window into the problems we have with community housing, affordable housing, and especially housing for a very special population like this. I am also a member and the former Chair of our CPC, and I was the Chair when we voted the five hundred thousand dollars for FORWARD, which was a couple of years ago now. But we were so convinced that this was the right thing to do, that we have stayed with them and held that money for them until they got their state grant, which was really the turning point for them. And finally, I have to say, I'm the grandmother of a child with developmental disabilities, and I will tell you the panic in the hearts of his parents, not that he will, he would probably not be in his housing, but the panic of the fact that he's going to be sixteen this year. He's not far from twenty-two. So when we talk about the, the break at twenty-two and services stop, we see even more the desperate need for housing for a very special population. So thanks for indulging my remarks, and I, as others, I do hope you'll carefully consider this very worthy project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's very good to see you. Sheila Lyons from the Town of Wellfleet, and also a board member of FORWARD. And I became involved. Kathy is a friend, so I have learned what it must be like to be a parent of an autistic child, and made me very grateful, and things that you just take for granted, we all. Having healthy children is something that we all hope for, but once it happens, it is something that we just don't consider what it must be like for others. And even as a commissioner, and as through my relationship with Kathy, whenever I had the opportunity to speak to healthcare agencies or Cape Cod Health, any of these meetings that I might have been in, I always talked about this emerging need, because autism really was low on the spectrum, low on, considering I'm saying spectrum, but low on people's radar, and it is now becoming more and more obvious and evident in the community as this population has grown. And you can just tell, you can have an idea of what you're going to be facing with your children, any children that you have in your school system that have special needs. How many of those may be considered autism and will need these services as they age out? And the other point I want to make is that we invest in these children up until twenty-two, and then we walk away. And it really is not, they're not, they're not capable of, of going on on their own. Very much like the Bay Bridge Project here, people need assistance, and community is defined by how they help others in their community. And I do look at Cape Cod. We all have our, we have fifteen towns. We're all very unique and, and wonderful and special in their own way. But in the end, we are a Cape Cod community, and this is something that will service, all of the, the priority will be given to Cape Cod residents, and that is what really drove that home, I think, in the State House. And I hope that that is a point that you can, you can take into consideration when you're debating this. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your vote.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Hearing no further public. I'd ask that we have a vote to close the public hearing portion, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Where would you like to start some questions? And if you'd like, I'm happy to ask Kathy and David back into the mic for specific issues, if you're so inclined, councilors. Looking from this side, I'm Consul Cullen.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for this PowerPoint that I've been looking through, and for the great idea, and the animus behind it. I support all of that. I'm so conflicted because giving money out of Barnstable with no guarantee of return on investment, other than the global regional concept, which is a good one, it's difficult to come by. So I do have a specific question about the model of two hundred and fifty grand from Barnstable. How is that number divined, if you don't mind? And then I might have a follow-up after that.
Can I ask Kathy or David to come forward? Or unless you have another representative
Thank you, Consul Cullen. I'm going to turn this over to our Chair of our Building Committee, Rob Brennan, who has been working with these numbers for, for years.
Counselor, Mr. President, thank you. I, I'm here tonight, again, Rob Brennan, I'm here tonight as the Chairman of the Building Committee, as a property owner, both in Hyannis and in Dennis, but also as a father of, of a fifteen-year-old who's on the spectrum. And while I was sitting here, I just did some, some quick number crunching, anticipating this, this question may come up. And if you look at the percentage of non-state funding, so Rep. Whelan did a fantastic job advocating for this regional project at the state level, which resulted in the million dollars coming in from the state. And interestingly, the breakdown among the contributing towns, and looking at it, both in terms of dollars and, and percentage, Dennis, who again, because this is located in Dennis, because Dennis is leading with the funding, no guarantee, you know, on the placement as well. But Dennis' population represents about six percent of the county population at two hundred and fifteen thousand in the county and about fourteen thousand in the town of Dennis. So six percent of the county, and their five hundred thousand dollars represents approximately thirty-five percent of the non-state funding. Barnstable, at a town population of about forty-four thousand, represents twenty percent of the, approximately twenty percent of the county population, and at two hundred and fifty thousand would be about eighteen percent of the non-state funding. Yarmouth, at twenty-three thousand population, is about ten percent of the county population, and their one hundred and twenty thousand represents about nine percent of the non-state funding. Mashpee, at fourteen thousand, is about six percent of the population. Their fifty thousand dollars, four percent of the non-state funding. And Chatham, at sixty-one hundred, about three percent of the county population, and their fifty thousand, also four percent of the non-state funding. So, even though, didn't go into this intentionally, but I think if you look at the, the percentage, population versus the percentage of the non-state funding, it roughly tracks proportionately through all the, the towns that are contributing to this. And I think if you think about autism as, as kind of an equal opportunity spectrum disorder, you can assume an equal distribution, you know, among all the, the town populations on the Cape as well. So, I think in a way, the alignment of populations and percentage of the non-state funding is, again, not by design, but just by nature. It ended up being, I think, a poignant distribution among all the towns that are contributing.
You have a follow-up?
I, I do. How'd you know? Do I have a follow-up look on my face?
Please.
So, just tracking back for some other regional projects that we funded, there were, there was a lot more hard data to go on. For instance, the Cape Cod Tech Project, where we know exactly how many students we have that go there. We can surmise we're going to have this many next year. The problem I have, I, I have, I want to make it really clear, I love the concept. I just am conflicted about the funding. So, the, the issue that I'm having with it is that these are, it says in your, in your document here, that these are lifelong homes. These are forever homes, which I think is a great concept. So then, we could have someone in a room for forty years. We could have no Barnstable residents, basically, for forty years. And that's just something I want everyone to be aware of, because it's two hundred and fifty grand that we're talking about sending out of the town, and we have no guarantee, other than the fact that we're helping humanity, which I can get my head around. I just want to make that really clear. That's, that's the big thing that everyone needs to understand. It's the elephant in the room, right? And I'm just really conflicted about it. I wish, is there a way, have you thought about another financial model, maybe where if someone from Barnstable does go, we can then offer some sort of a scholarship? Or is there an opportunity for funding after the fact? Or is this your, your only, have you sharpened the pencil and looked at other alternative ways to fund? Because I have a hard time with it, if that's, if you can understand.
We, 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 we have been fundraising privately, as well as, and, for the past five years, and that is slow-going. And what we found is that we are a very unique, small band in terms of the population that we're trying to serve. It does make it a lot more difficult for private fundraising. We're not a new firehouse, we're not a new police station, the art museum, other things that may have a broader, a broader group of people interested in helping them. We, we've gotten lots of people involved in our fundraising, but it, not enough to raise two-point-four million dollars. The Department, in recognizing the need in that, and in certifying our program, as I said earlier, directed us to the Department of Housing and Community Development to the place where group homes are funded. So the million dollars is a big leg up on this. And, and Dennis CPC was the first to give us money, even before we got this million-dollar grant. They gave us the five hundred thousand. And we, and another, there is a group similar to ours, Cape Cod Village in Orleans, they've received funding from seven lower and outer Cape CPCs. We realized during our fund, our private fundraising process, that CPC affordable housing is, is a place to go for, to, you know, is a, is a place to go for this regional project. And, and as you can see in the other four towns, we've been, we've been successful.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work and devotion, and I appreciate you answering my questions as thoroughly as you could. And I hope you understand my position. Thank you.
Counselor, if I could just add one, just one point, just that wasn't brought up, but just, I think it's worth saying that one of the other benefits, you know, to this obviously is, this is not locating, you know, eight beds and, and, you know, the acreage and the land in Barnstable. So the, the flipside benefit, which, which is one that I became aware of over the past couple of years, is that this provides services and beds that will be available to Barnstable families, but keeps Barnstable, and specifically Hyannis, you know, properties on the tax rolls. So not, not taking it off with our, you know, with our nonprofit status. So I think there is, you know, there is some, you know, some benefit there as well.
Point taken. I would say that it's, a, a group autism home would not upset me in Barnstable. So, thank you. That's not what my, the thrust of my argument is.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that.
Or with regard to anything else that I work on as a counselor. It's not, not an autism home.
Thank you. This is in exchange. Thank you very much. Down the end, Consul Tinsley, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was not able to attend the meeting before MMA, but I was approached at MMA with a discussion about this, which prompted me to go on your website. I've done reading. I have friends who have children that are on the spectrum. I can say that, just like watersheds, to, to my fellow, fellow councilors, where we are working with other towns that don't stop at our border of Barnstable and Dennis or Yarmouth, this is not from the general fund, as it says. This is a community preservation fund, and in this instance, we need to think about the Cape Cod community. While it's being built in Dennis, Dennis is also not guaranteed that they're going to have residents in this home. Theoretically, like a discussion years ago on another topic, theoretically, we could have eight Barnstable residents in this home. Is it likely? No, it is not likely. But theoretically, if you're doing numbers, which I do every day, it could happen. And possibly to ease some of that, I, I did go through this, and I still, while I do support this, and I am going to vote yes on this, I still would like, in the, in the background- this, and I am going to vote yes on this, I still would like, in the background, I highlighted authorize the Chair to consult with the Legal Department for the development of adequate security measures for the town's legal interest in the property. I would like to hear what the results of that consultation were, if they did indeed happen. Thank you.
I'll address that for you at a little later point, if I may, Mr. Tinsley. Very good point, though, we've worked on that. Yes, Counselor Beanbender?
Thank you, President Crocker. I think this is a wonderful project, and to sort of mimic Counselor Tinsley's comments, housing is a tremendous issue that faces all of us across the Cape, for all of our constituents at various levels, whether it is, you know, adults with autism, whether it's low income, we have major problems in accommodating folks of all ranges. And it is a regional issue. And towns have recognized this and are working on housing issues on a regional, starting to work on a regional level, and CPC funds are one of the ways to do that, to help each other out. Yes, this is a home for adults with autism, that's not located in Barnstable, and even had it been located here, we don't know that there's any guarantee. But as Counselor Tinsley points out, I mean, there is an opportunity here that we could have several residents there, there's no way to know. I mean, I remember when I was knocking on doors in my precinct prior to the election, that two of those, in 500 homes, I knocked two of those doors, folks told me about their children who had autism. And those were just two homes that told me, I'm sure that there were others that didn't. So if you extrapolate those numbers for 45,000 people, you have potentially 180 residents in the town of Barnstable who are autistic. So I am very much in favor of this project. I also commend you for working so hard at developing your funding stream, going to the state. Thank you, Rep. Whalen, for all your work, going to the various towns. But I would also point to the other towns to show that the faith that they have in this project, that they stepped up with CPC funding, despite knowing that they might not be able to have a resident here. And I just don't even think that that's really the important issue here. The issue is that there is a need that has to get filled, and we need to do our part to help support this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes, Counselor Snep.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your presentation tonight. I agree with my colleagues to the right, and I wanted to address a concern that Counselor Cullum raised, in terms of, you know, putting forth town CPC money for a project that is located in another community. The affordable housing world is very complex, in terms of all the different financing mechanisms that any one project has to pull together. And interestingly, CPC is usually one source that most projects seek, because it shows a local commitment. So we have many projects in our community where we've been asked to provide CPC money. We usually have an opportunity at that time to request a local preference, hence tying the money that we're providing with having residents or people who work in our community to be selected into those housing units. What many of us don't realize is that is on the first go-round. So, because there's a lottery process, that local preference is only applicable in that first, you know, go-round of who gets housing, who's selected for that housing. Subsequent individuals or households that are selected for that housing do not have to meet that local preference. So in a sense, even though we're making funding commitments in our town, over time, there's no guarantee that people from Barnstable are necessarily benefiting directly from that. So in that spirit, I would say that, in a way, we're providing funding to another community, knowing up on the front end that we don't know where people are going to be coming from. Are you able to actually commit to Cape and Islands residents? Did the state allow you to make that preference, that it wouldn't be people from the entire state?
Yeah, I believe that answer to that question is yes, but I am going to refer to the Area Director of DDS to answer that.
Hi. DDS operates and provides services with limited resources, they're finite, based completely on an assessed need of needing the level of service in question, and the priority of their current circumstances. While in almost all cases, it will be people from the Cape, I cannot say we would never consider someone from off Cape.
Thank you. I have one more question.
Yes, follow-up?
Thank you. Another concern that was raised is that this is permanent housing, and therefore, the initial residents may be living there in perpetuity. My understanding is there's a really strong movement away from providing, in some cases, group housing for individuals with disabilities, and that there really is, you know, where possible, people are moved into more independent housing. And I would assume that the model of care that you're providing at Cape Forward would also be looking toward, for those, where it's appropriate, people would be moving to independent living.
Of course, where that's appropriate, that would be the goal. The level of care of these residents doesn't indicate that, though, that's, and it's a good question, it's why we're building a duplex, two homes for four people each. We originally wanted to build four homes, and the Department was opposed to having too many people in one setting, and making it look institutional. And duplexes are allowable in the Commonwealth. So, yes, and each of these individuals has what's called an individual service plan, which is reevaluated annually. So goals are, the service plan is made up of goals for each of the individuals, and if that's, if one of the goals is more independence, that would be something that DDS and other providers would work on with that individual, so that's a possibility. But I think it's important to note that we're looking at people who are unable to, for the most part, be alone at home by themselves.
I'm going to move with first questions first, then I'll come back for a second sweep. Counselor Rapkurseny.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for coming forward. I've actually watched this through the CPC process, and I know it's been long, and you started at a $2 million budget, and it's escalated pretty rapidly to 2.4. Is that because of building costs? And is this because you're getting so much money from the state? Is this a prevailing wage project? Davis Bacon?
Well, it is because of building costs.
Please use the mic. Thank you.
It is because of building costs entirely. The bids, we went out for bids just a few months ago, they came back, they were higher than anticipated, and that's not unusual. So what we've done so far is done value engineering to try and lower those costs.
Yeah, explain to that, because that's the savings of over 300,000. What is, explain to that?
Yeah, well, it's, our priority was to impact the quality of life items the least. But it turned out there are certain engineering things we could do, going from a cross-based basement to slab, that sort of thing, sort of the easy pickings of ways that we can save money. Value engineering is really just saving money.
Okay.
And then there are others that we've, that we picked, that we're hoping we can build back if we're able to raise more money. For instance, there were several porches that had to be eliminated. But most of it's not going to affect the quality of life. It was really some, excuse me, issues involving drainage and other factors.
So the state won't make you pay prevailing wage?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I'm looking for first questions. Philip, you all set? Go ahead. Would you like to have the floor? Please do. Counsel Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation and explanation, I appreciate it. I believe I'm the only town counselor here that's the parent of an adult with autism, 28-year-old adult child, I call him. I do have concerns about the selection process, as to which adult autistic individuals would be admitted to this home, what that criteria is. And also, in your PowerPoint presentation, it says that residents can come from any town on the Cape. And that includes towns that have contributed nothing. This is a little disconcerting to me, because in that scenario, a town that contributes nothing could actually take up all eight spots. And we certainly are the largest population, and I'm sure we probably equally share with the largest population of individuals that are in the spectrum. So is there any way to know what that criteria would be? And since there is an ISP, would that criteria change from individual to individual?
I think we'll have to defer that briefly.
Hi again. As I said earlier, there's an assessed need for that level of service is our first cut. The second cut is, out of those people looking for that service, what would be their priority of need? So we'd be looking to serve people in the most vulnerable situations, where if we don't act and place them, it could result in harm. That person could come from anywhere. That's a main cut that we will have to make, is someone who needs the service most, at the time we're looking to place someone. When you get past that, you actually have to then look at, will the people fit together? Will they work okay? As a department, in helping that happen, we will look also at some of our existing homes, where someone may have a second-floor bedroom, be aging, that might not be the best situation, and look how we may switch where people are living to better accommodate their actual needs.
Have a follow-up. Yes, most vulnerable or most need, is it, would financial need be the most first consideration?
No.
No.
We're talking about health and safety.
Health and safety. Okay, thank you.
I'm working my way to the left. Yes, I'll start down the end.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation. If we look at the model of housing authorities, housing authorities, you can apply to one in Far River, New Bedford, Boston, Springfield, wherever there's a housing authority, you can take out an application. So there's no guarantee that everybody who's in the housing authority in the town of Barnstable originated from here. We are citizens of one community, we are citizens of Massachusetts. This is an opportunity for this town to step up and take care of other citizens that are from the same state that we are from. And I'm not going to be sitting around asking people where they were born, whether or not we're going to take care of them. I've heard so much about, we don't want anymore in Hyannis, we don't want anymore in Barnstable, and where are our people supposed to go? So this is an opportunity for another town that's sticking up for our people, willing to take on no-tax property, willing to share the $500,000. This is not even a question for me, I'll be voting for this, in that we're so stuck on whether or not one of our people are going to be in there, they're all my brothers and sisters, and I don't care what town they're from. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Huber. Yes, Counselor Dagwan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for this presentation as well. I am in support of this. I think we need more housing for this particular population. When the school committee was here last, and had an opportunity to talk with them, one of the questions I asked them was about the increase of children with autism within the school system, and it's growing. It's more and more students are coming in, particularly at the lower levels. I have a grandson myself, I have two of them, matter of fact, one's at the lower end of the spectrum, and the other one's at the high end of the spectrum. I'm concerned about the one that's at the high end of the spectrum. How do we, how do you, I don't really care what town people come from, but I am concerned about how you're going to choose a child. What child, what would you turn them away from? I mean, if they, if they're at the high end of the spectrum, what characteristics or whatever would not, wouldn't qualify them to be in this type of housing? Can anybody speak to that?
Just to help on this process, if I may help you a little, we heard that you gave us one, two, and three lists. If you want to revisit those again, you're welcome to. You gave us criteria when we were asking criteria.
Sure.
And I believe your question was, who do you, when do you know who you're picking and how you go through the process? So obviously, criteria is a part of that, so feel free to.
When we're going to place someone is when we make the assessment of who's there, who's, who needs it now, is basically what we do. And the level of need that we're talking about for residential services is a person with autism who also has an intellectual disability or developmental disability. It's a dual diagnosis for residential services. So if there are high-performing person with autism, they probably wouldn't meet eligibility for a residential service.
It's the one that's not high-functioning is what I'm concerned about. And I think you may have two, or three, or four applicants that.
Again, we look at health and safety of those situations, and who would be the priority to serve at that time. We will seek an alternative type of support, support services as opposed to residential services for other people with autism.
Would there be someone working with them within this setting, if need be?
In the Forward hopes?
Yes.
Yes. The capabilities is the organization that would provide the residential services, staffing, and DDS would be funding those positions, the operation of the home.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I would ask that you meet with the clerk for a minute, she's having difficulty of getting your name and your title.
Sure.
For the record, please.
On the safe.
Yeah, or you can sign in and fill in.
My name is Rick Kavicki, I'm the Area Director for the Cape and Islands of Department of Developmental Services.
Thank you. My way this way again, still, Counselor Neary.
Thank you, President Crocker. I just have a question regarding the funding, I heard a couple of things. There was a comment made, possibly indicating that should Barnstable not participate, that the $1 million of state funding may be at risk. Is that a correct statement? Or it will be at risk?
Kathy, feel free to respond, please.
Thanks. If we, we looked at, we look at the Barnstable CPC grant as part of our $300,000 that we promised the state that we would raise, we've raised more than that. However, the, our other, so yes, is the answer to your question, because the other CPC grants that we're awaiting will not come through until their spring town meeting votes in Mashpee, Yarmouth, and Chatham. So we are looking to do our financial closing in March and then break round. So, so yes, this is a significant vote for us tonight.
Okay, so another question being that should, if the council votes favorably on this item, how does this, how does Forward go forward in funding itself as the years go by? This looks like it's basically a building project, is what you're asking for. So where the funds come to continue the services to these folks?
So I'm going to do my best, and maybe with some help from Mr. Brennan. So yes, we, Forward is organized to build this duplex currently. Afterwards, our board will oversee, we will own the buildings, and will oversee the property capabilities. Again, we'll provide the group home services. They will receive monies from the Department, and because all of these residents will be low-income eligible, they receive Social Security, and we will receive rent from capabilities to keep us afloat, and we will continue to fundraise and grant write. David's job is mostly grant writing and fundraising, that's pretty much what our board is doing. But there is a vehicle for regular income from the clients who live at the home.
So Forward represents basically the real estate segment of the, of this project.
Right. We will not be providing any of the programming.
Thank you.
Working my way down. Mr. Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. My fellow councils have asked. My fellow councils have asked some that I was interested in, in terms of the long-term funding. But I am curious, as a retired school superintendent, I dealt a lot with Chapter 766, and parents who were in the know, who were a little bit more sophisticated, would go out and then hire an advocate, and they'd work on behalf of their child to get more benefits, if you will, than the person that perhaps didn't understand how the system and the process worked. I want to support this, but I also want to make sure that those who are most vulnerable in terms of the parents, if you will, who don't really understand the process and the procedure, have the same kind of opportunity to be able to get their adult child into this particular program. How do you guarantee that? Is there such a thing? There were advocates for those kids who were in 766. Are there adult advocates that come before your particular board and make a convincing argument at the expense of someone who's not in the know? And I think it's that lower socioeconomic level of folks sometimes who don't really understand how the systems work. How do you guarantee against that?
Every person seeking services from DDS has to be found eligible, and it's done by an intake and eligibility unit. The same evaluation assessment of a person's needs and capabilities is conducted for everyone, despite who's advocating for them. It results in a score independent of that advocacy. And that's our basis for the first cut of determining the level of need.
Okay. And in terms of ultimately making that final choice, it's, obviously, you're a building committee for all intents and purposes. Who's going to make, it's your department that's going to make this choice, and you have a universal set of rules that have been tested, that are reliable, that are significant, that basically get the job done in terms of making this election process?
Steinhilber.
Yes.
We have an eligibility and prioritization process.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
It's codified in regulation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thirteen yes.
Congratulations. The hour is 10 o'clock. I'm heading back for, actually, I think the first question from.
Move the question.
I have a first and a second to move the question. We have a lot more business, so if you want to leave the hall, please feel free. That ceases debate, and we'll discuss moving the question.
We just want to say, thank you so much. We are overwhelmed by your unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye. Good effort on your part. All those in opposition, please signify by saying aye. I'll take a 30-second break here, so we give them a chance to clear the hall. And any abstentions? I hear none, and passes unanimously. Hey, those are real questions, you know.
No, no, that was just to let the vote.
I know. No, 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 it's not voted yet. The hour is getting late. That's just the vote to move the question.
Right, we understand.
Please. Please clear the hall. I'd ask our clerk to take the roll call. We're looking for a majority vote.
Counselors, Beedenbender.
Yes.
Yes.
Crocker. Crocker.
Yes.
Yes.
Cullen. Cullen.
Yes.
Yes.
Dagwan. Dagwan.
Yes.
Yes.
Flores. Flores.
Yes. Yes.
Rapgrasseti. Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
Yes.
Hebert. Hebert.
Yes. Yes.
Levek. Levek.
Yes. Yes.
Neary. Neary.
Yes. Yes.
Schnep. Schnep.
Yes.
Steinhilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
The hour is 10 o'clock. We have a lot more business, so if you want to leave the hall, please feel free.
We just want to say, thank you so much. We are overwhelmed by your unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good effort on your part. I'll take a 30-second break here, so we give them a chance to clear the hall. The hour is getting late. Please clear the hall. We still have a lot of business. We will be waiting for our clerk for recording officer. Counselors, the time has come. Madam Clerk, could you please check to see that I have quorum at this point? Thank you very much. Following with our procedures, I am asking us to look at page six, 2019-083, Old Business, Public Hearing, Roll Call, Majority. Counselor Flores, Vice President Flores.
Yes, this is item 2019-083. It is old business. It is a public hearing, and it will be a roll call by majority vote. And the item reads appropriation order in the amount of $147,725 from the Community Preservation Funds for Preservation and Restoration at St. Mary's Episcopal Church located at 3055 Main Street, Route 6A in Barnstable, as written.
Thank you. And for the rationale, we have Lindsey Pitch hitter, Kathy. Thank you. How are you?
Hopefully, I'm doing him justice.
Oh, you're doing an excellent job. Thank you very much.
Again, Catherine Garofoli, Community Preservation Committee. St. Mary's Episcopal Church located at 3055 Main Street, Barnstable, Route 6A, is seeking an appropriation of CPA historic preservation funds in the amount of $147,725 for a small portion of a capital project. The CPA funding request is for the following work on the church. $113,242 for a portion of the cost for installation of an interior fire protection sprinkler system, water line, controls, and new fire hydrant. $9,500 for replacing and replicating exterior doors, replacement, replication of exterior trim work, and $24,983.20 for restoring the front entrance to its original form by demolition and replacement of the entrance with original bluestone. The fire suppression system will be installed throughout the church complex consisting of the church and attached social hall. However, the CPA request is only for the historic church structure. The church structure dates from the 1890s, and exterior has solidly positive exterior historic attributes principally the unique English country Tudor shingle-style architecture. The church is located in the vicinity of other historic resources which have been subject to the past committee CPA recommendations and appropriations for the historic preservation of projects. Of projects, yeah. At December 11, 2018, Barnstable Historical Commission Hearing, members voted unanimously that the church is a contributing structure in the Old Kings Highway Regional Historic District. Numerous community organizations and partners also use St. Mary's meeting rooms, parish hall, and church for secular activities. The community preservation request is a small portion, 7.6 percent, of a capital improvement project encompassing the entire church complex with a total budget of $1,927,730. The remaining balance will be raised privately through a capital campaign currently underway, which to date stands at $1,051,000. At the November 26, 2018 CPC meeting, the committee voted unanimously to approve the application of St. Mary's Episcopal Church with an appropriate document to be executed to fulfillment of the town's interest in historic resource preservation and restoration. The possibility of a mortgage instead of a historic preservation restriction was mentioned. So, we're looking for your approval on this matter.
Thank you for the rationale. I'd ask for a motion to go into, well, it's actually just an acceptance of a gift, but I would ask if anybody in the public would like to speak to the issue. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. So, under the orders of an appropriation, are there any public that would like to come forward to speak to this? You're more than welcome to. Did we open the public hearing? We had the rationale. Would you like to open the public hearing? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? We're in the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to us in the public hearing? Fine, I would like a motion to close the public hearing. Anybody in favor of closing? Do I have a second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Thank you. Thank you. We will be able to ask anybody up to answer Counselor's questions. Do we have any Counselor questions? I'm starting on this end. I get Counselor Beedenbender.
This is actually not so much a question, but just sort of to proactively perhaps head off a concern that folks may have. I liaise for the CPC, and one of the questions that came up was in regards to it being a church. And was this a problem for CPA funding, sorry? So, I just wanted to relay to you what the findings were. So, the committee's members deliberated on each of the questions, expressed one of them being the religious nature of the church, and was this a conflict? One, funding a fire suppression system in the historic portion of the building is to protect a National Register historic building that happens to be a church. There is no requirement for church affiliation in order for the church to be used for community benefit. This was also, the question was also spurred and taken up with Attorney Wile, who looked into this, and there was some precedent that I'm now going to refer to. And what we found was that unlike the Kaplan case, where that church was operating in the red St. Mary, is not financially destitute, and the CP funding request is intended to preserve and restore the historic property only. So, thanks for finding that for me.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions from counselors on this side? I'm headed in this direction, counselors. Vice President?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This St. Mary's Episcopal Church located in precinct one, I just want to attest to the fact that this building, the historical side of the building, is used on a regular basis by a number of different groups. The Village Association, the Historical Association, both of which have been members longstanding. It really contributes, if you will, to the well-being of this community. So, just as we approved unanimously the prior item, I'm hoping that my fellow counselors will do the same for this. Thank you.
Yes. Back to Counselor Wallace, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you tell me which foundation or nonprofit holds the deed to this church?
My name is Libby Gibson. I'm director of St. Mary's Church, and the Protestant Episcopal Diocese of Massachusetts owns our property and historic structure.
Okay, do you have physical custody of the deed?
No, we do not. It resides at the diocese.
Okay. That's good, because we had a similar situation with the West Parish Church, the 1717 Meeting House. And the 1717 Meeting House was granted $275,000 in CPC funds. Then, when they went to release the funds, the foundation had to prove ownership, and they couldn't do it because the deed burned in a fire in the county courthouse, I think in 1880 or something like that. So, it's good that you have that, because it makes it a whole lot easier to gain the funds.
Thank you.
Just so we get right to a point of fact, we do have Attorney Houghton with us. And Attorney Houghton, if you can address how this would be held against the deed. And it is a question that actually came up with Counselor Tinsley, but I lost it a bit, but it's the same type of work. Thank you.
It's been a while. Good evening. Happy New Year. The, this would be secured either with a, what I refer to as the typical historic preservation restriction, or in lieu of a historic preservation restriction, it could also be secured with a mortgage. But the reason for the, the reason for the difference in these circumstances is the historic restrictions can actually, depending on how they're phrased and what they cover, can be an infringement upon the free expression of religion. For instance, in the Kaplan case, that involved windows in a church which had a religious message. And although a restriction was placed on the church, the court indicated that that might be an infringement on the free exercise of religion if the, if the restriction allowed the control of what the message was. So, we'll either, if we can't, if we can't compose a restriction that's, doesn't restrict or unduly restrict the free exercise, we'd use, refer to, refer to a mortgage.
And I apologize for mixing the two, but just for a quick response, the counselor, Tinsley's request, we intend to put a lien on the note in Dennis?
Yes, and Dennis, that would be strictly a mortgage.
Thank you. I'm sorry to confuse the two, but I owed you that response. Thank you. I'm looking for Counselor's questions, please.
Move the question.
Counselor Steinhilber.
Second.
All those in favor of moving the questions, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as unanimous. We need a roll call. Simple majority. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Crocker.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Steinhilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. I will be asking the council's indulgence to take a few items out of order to try to clear the room just a little while we have people here. I would ask you to jump down to new business 2019-089 and 2019-090. Both of those are represented by our staff in the back from Marine and Environmental Counselor Neary, that would be page 42, please, Counselor Neary. 2019-089 may be acted upon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business which may be acted upon. Item number 2019-089, the acceptance of a gift in the form of a debit valued at $500 from Mr. James Hurley, president of New England Maritime, as written.
Thank you very much. I have a first and second today for the rationale. I have Derek Lawson, and I must congratulate Derek. He received a new title recently. He's our Harbor Master Division Supervisor. Congratulations, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Would you like to provide the rationale of how the gift came to bear and where its place, please?
Sure. Good evening, Derek Lawson, Assistant Harbor Master. Mr. Jim Hurley from, um, New England Maritime, um, has offered this davit that is currently located at Gateway Marina, uh, right behind Assleton Park, um, for Harbor Master, um, duties. Uh, he no longer has use for the davit, uh, he has a company that resides on Ocean Street, um, and, uh, he has generously offered it to the Harbor Master.
Um, any questions on this gift? Hearing no questions? Yes, I'm sorry?
Thank you, I'm just curious, when the davit is removed from, this is behind the, um, the, um, museum on South Street, correct?
That is correct.
Right, so when this is removed, where will it go?
We're gonna leave it in this position. Um, the Harbor Master has over 208s to navigation that we place and maintain every year. Uh, currently, we pull up to a bulkhead, uh, at high tide over at Bismarck Park to get heavy equipment off. With this davit, we'll be able to utilize that to get some of this heavy equipment off the boat, uh, not tied dependent.
Okay, thank you.
Move the question.
All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimous to move the question. All those in favor of accepting the gift on 219-090, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record, 090. Roy, I'm jumping to the next one. 089, thank you. So the vote was on 089, to be clear, we'll call it again. All those in favor of accepting the gift on 219-089, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, please record it as unanimous, thank you. While we have them, this was the other one that I keep jumping up to. Uh, if I could, councillor Neary, I ask you again for the very next page, page 44, 219-90.
Yes, Mr. President, new business may be acted upon, item number 219-90. It's the acceptance of a gift in the amount of $2,000 to the Town of Barnstable Shellfish Propagation Program of the Marine and Environmental Affairs Department from the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance and Agricultural Research Corporation, ARC, as written.
I have a first and a second, we have Amy Crotto with us, uh, Amy is the Natural Resource Officer. Amy, if you'd like to give us the rationale, please.
Sure, so, um, the Aquaculture Research Corporation, the Cape Fishermen's Alliance, and the Barnstable County Cooperative Extension, um, had received a grant to do a study on surf clams. Um, currently, well over 90% of the aquaculture in the state of Massachusetts is focused on oysters, um, and there is a slight danger in monoculture. So, um, part of their mission is to look into other species that can be cultivated, um, in the case of a crash or a plateaued market. Um, so they had done two years, um, $1,000 to any of the growers who participated. Uh, each year was built into the grant as a stipend, um, for participation. We let them use part of our propagation area off of Handy Point, um, in Kootuat to do the surf clam study. They raised the surf clams, sort of tended to them to see what the best practices for raising them would be, um, practiced using a hydraulic type rake for, um, harvest of them. And, uh, the state has recently permitted the sale of what we call now butter clams, which are undersized, um, surf clams. So they're normally legally only harvestable at five inches. This would allow them to be harvested at one and a half inches and marketed, um, in a much sort of sweeter, smaller size, uh, which opens up a new possibility for aquaculture.
Terrific, thank you.
$2,000 will go right into the shellfish propagation fund, right?
Any, any questions, please? I have a move the question, first and a second, all those in favor of moving the question to accept the gift of 219-90, all those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye. Any abstention? Any nays? Hearing none, it passes, let's move 219-90, acceptance of the gift in the amount of $2,000 as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. While we're on this end of the, uh, scale, let's jump down to 219-092, it's a read-in, should be an easy move for us. I'm on page 48. Councillor Neary, would you give me the read, please?
Yes, Mr. President.
Refer to the planning board.
This is new business to refer to the planning board. Item number 219-92, it's an amendment of the zoning map of the Town of Barnstable, Massachusetts, to amend and expand the residence district to include the entirety of parcel 116/014, as written.
Thank you. All those in favor of referring that to the planning board, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Let's jump up and clean up a read-in at 219-088. Page 28, please. Vice President, would you please read it in?
This is new business, referring to a public hearing scheduled for February 28th, 2019, item 2019-088. It's authorizing the town manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the Town of Barnstable and 720 Main Residences, an LLC for property located at 720 Main Street in Hyannis, Massachusetts, as written.
Thank you. I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving 219-088 to a public hearing on February 28th, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Let's jump up one more to 87. I have that on page 23. Vice President, 219-087, refer to a hearing on 228.
Yeah, um, yes, um, Mr. President, new business, referring to a public hearing scheduled for February 28th, 2019, item 2019-087. It is a supplemental appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $765,000 for the fiscal year 2019, uh, to the airport operating budget, as written.
Do I have a second? Thank you, I have a first and a second, all those in favor of moving 219-087 to a public hearing on 228, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. I would ask Lynn Poyant to come down, if I may, and we will move to, uh, 219-086 on page 21. Councillor Steinhelber, would you read that in for me, please?
Thank you, Mr. President, under new business, this is item 219-086, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $1,000 from the Kiwanis Club of Hyannis to the Barnstable Youth Commission for the annual seventh grade youth summit, as written.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, councillors, Lynn Poyant, Director of Community Services. Um, this $1,000 grant was given to us as an opportunity through Officer Brian Morrison, who is also the president of the local Kiwanis Club. Um, he works closely with the Barnstable Youth Commission and invited a couple of their members, Ethan Serhall and Lucas McCauley, to go with our Recreation Director Patty Machado to make a presentation about the youth summit. Um, it was very well received and the Kiwanis unanimously voted that evening to give them $1,000. This year's youth summit will be held on March 15th, which is a Friday, at Cape Cod Community College, and this will help defray the expenses associated with the program.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much, all those in favor of moving the question? All those in favor of, uh, 219-086 and acceptance of it, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Uh, we can jump to extending the hearing on the, um, airport, if you would, that would be 219-80. That's on page 16. We'll move it to March 21st if it's, if I can find someone, I'm, uh, looking for, uh, councillor Hebert, please, to read in 219-080, move it to a, uh, continued act on, um, March 28, 21st, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, item number 219-080, authorization for the Airport Commission to enter into a 49-year lease for the property identified as map 311, parcel 092, and addressed as 790 Ayano Road, Route 132, Hyannis, Massachusetts, to be moved for a second reading to the...
March 21st.
March 21st.
March 21st, thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor, a second I have, all those in favor of moving 219-080 to a second read on March 21st, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as unanimous. I have, uh, Dan Santos for three. Starting on page 10, please. On, uh, 219-068, move to a public hearing and we need a roll call majority, please. Somebody, I'm looking for, page 10. Please, Vice President?
This is old business, public hearing, roll call vote, uh, by majority, item 2019-068. This is an appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $250,000 for feasibility study and preliminary investigation of the wastewater treatment facility at Joint Base Cape Cod, as written.
Thank you, I have a first and a second, and our Director of DPW for the rationale. Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. This photograph up here makes me nostalgic for a real winter.
Yes, I agree.
Come on, we gotta lighten it up a little.
Bring on the snow.
No, I had my fingers crossed behind me.
Just think of the money you're saving.
Here we go.
Finally, a snowplow budget we can live with and you wanna curse us, right?
No, I just, we like it at DPW, we enjoy the rush. It's a bonding experience. The towns of Barnes, the towns of Bourne, Falmouth, and Mashpee and Sandwich have been investigating the feasibility of using the existing, underutilized wastewater treatment facility at Joint Base Cape Cod to meet a portion of their future wastewater needs. It is anticipated that the facility and affluent disposal beds at the base will require significant upgrades to allow for the projected additional flow from surrounding communities. Due to the relative proximity of base infrastructure to the western portion of Barnstable, it is likely to be more cost-effective for future sewer areas in the western portion of the town to be treated at an expanded Joint Base Cape Cod facility than at the town's wastewater pollution control facility in Hyannis, because the lion's share of searing costs for this area will be in collection and transmission. Additionally, a potentially significant issue in Barnstable's comprehensive wastewater management plan will be to identify disposal locations within the town. The possibility of affluent disposal at JBCC would ameliorate this issue and make available additional areas within Barnstable for water supply and water supply protection, as well as to remove a potential contamination stream from Barnstable's groundwater sheds. For this project, the town will hire an engineering consultant to study the feasibility of further expanding the Joint Base Cape Cod wastewater treatment facility to accommodate additional flows from the western portion of the Town of Barnstable. With growing interest in further expansion of sewers in the western portion of the town, it is recommended that the town begin this study immediately in order to determine if utilizing the JBCC facility is an option that the town should pursue further and to embark on additional discussions and negotiations with surrounding communities and regulatory agencies. Funding for this appropriation will be provided from the Comprehensive Water Management and Private Way Fund, which has an available balance of $16,447,139. There is no impact to the Department of Public Works operating budget as a result of this appropriation.
Thank you, Dan. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? Could I get a second? I have a first and a second, we're in the public hearing process, would anybody like to address us on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Please record that as unanimous. Um, what's your pleasure, councillors? I'll start on this end, yes.
Thank you, Dan. Could you explain how, uh, the feasibility study that we would be approving tonight would dovetail with the work that's already been done by the four towns and resulted in the Wright Pierce Report that, you know, already probably looks at some of these questions, but...
Sure. Actually, we'd be utilizing the same consultant, that's our plan, and we plan to build on the work that they've done for the four towns, but looking more specifically at how, um, the needs of Barnstable may be addressed at the joint base. So, uh, we get to take the advantage of all the previous work and research and digging that that firm has done, uh, in doing our feasibility study. So it's a very cost-effective approach to this, and will provide us the information on which we can kind of make a go-no-go decision on whether to pursue, uh, this option further.
Follow-up?
Yeah, at what point would we be looking at consolidating our efforts with the other four communities? Would this feasibility study sort of look at the pros and cons of how we move together?
Yes, we are actually meeting with the, uh, other towns and there's actually, the next meeting is tomorrow morning, uh, in Falmouth. And so we will be looking at all of the towns being able to address their needs, um, and not their complete needs, but each town has specific needs they're looking at possibly having addressed at JBCC. And we're, uh, entering the mix and providing our expertise to that group, uh, and hopefully, uh, by, by, uh, bringing it to the table, our needs as well, we can come up with a, uh, a most efficient, uh, proposal that will, uh, result in hopefully, uh, construction of an expanded plant and effluent discharge at the base. That's, that's ultimately our, our goal. We just gotta make sure it makes sense, it's doable, it's affordable, and the feasibility study will look at all those issues.
I'll start, one more follow-up, please.
Another question. Um, another item that we'll be considering is money for the expansion of the Kootuat system. I didn't know if these two projects were linked in any way?
Um, well, yes, in, in our thinking, and I think you'll see that when we get to that item, how I make that connection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Rapkisetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, Dan, uh, for taking time, uh, out of your schedule to meet with me regarding this item and the, uh, 071 coming up. Um, and just, um, going on councillor, councillor Schnep's, uh, comments about the Wright Pierce study, not only that, but, um, there was a pretty significant study done in 2012, um, by CH2M Hill, which I'm sure you're aware of, you've read, um, um, which was done for Mass Development. So this not only would be a partnership for, um, Joint Base Cape Cod, but Mass Development who, uh, um, holds, um, the land north of Joint Base, or...
Yeah, my understanding is that they are not in the mix, and I'll turn to Assistant Town Manager to confirm that.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening, Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. Yeah, what Director Santos stated is correct, they, Mass Development was involved and, to a certain sense, they still are involved in the grant that the four towns pursued. Um, there was a point about a year ago where the Joint Base, um, 102nd Intel Wing was pursuing a direct relationship with Mass Development to basically serve a period of time in operating those facilities, and those discussions fell apart. So there, there is not a direct relationship with, um, Mass Development at this point. Even following that, the base also had a direct relationship or direct, um, conversations, exclusive conversations with the Wampanoag tribe for a period of time, and within the past month or so, those have deteriorated as well, which pretty much opened the door. Uh, the base is looking for a partner in this regard, and we think the regional approach with the five towns presents a significant opportunity moving forward.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Um, the, and you mentioned, um, the, uh, the grant that Falmouth received, and that was a, a community... The, and you mentioned the grant that Falmouth received, and that was a community compact grant, I believe, and I think we're a compact community, and I wondered if we were going to look for any money, rather than dipping into our fund, could the state supply us some money from that fund?
I think that we'll know more about that after tomorrow's meeting. Phase one of that grant was $140,000 that the town had, those four towns had, and this will be the second meeting that we've been participating in. The last meeting, they did bring up that they're strategizing going for phase two of that grant, so hopefully after tomorrow, we'll know more detail on that.
Okay, all right, great. And I'll just continue to say that I'm still looking for our comprehensive wastewater management plan to be done, so we can start implementing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also would point out that the last words of the grant says that it authorized the manager for the appropriations, make available for the purposes of authorizing, accepting of grants, gifts, and the relation there too, so we have another one. Anything from the side, may I ask? Hearing no further questions? All those in favor of 2019-068 as drafted, please, oh, roll call, I need a roll call down there.
Counselors, Cullen?
Yes.
Dag one?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next one, please, it's on your next page, 12, 2019-069, Old Business Public Hearing, Roll Call Majority. Could I ask the Vice President to read it in, please?
Yes, Old Business Public Hearing, a roll call by majority, item 2019-069, it's appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $835,000 for the design of roadway and utility work, as written.
I hear a second, and for the rationale, we again have our DPW Commissioner, please.
Vineyard Wind plans to begin construction in 2020 on an underground electrical transmission cable project, which will install more than five miles of 220 kilovolt transmission cable from Coveles Beach to its termination at a substation in Independence Park. The work will involve installing large underground utility duct banks and vaults within a number of Barnstable roads, including, in part, Craigville Beach Road, Strawberry Hill Road, Quocket Lane, Finney's Lane, Addicks Lane, and Independence Drive. Approximately four miles of this route is targeted for future sewer expansion in the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. Residential sewer connections in the neighborhoods along this route are not part of this project. As a result of the proposed construction, approximately 3,000 feet of existing water main owned and operated by the Hyannis Water System, as well as water mains owned by COMM and Barnstable Fire District, will need to be relocated. The Vineyard Wind project will include complete road reconstruction or mill and overlay of impacted roads. Consequently, it will be cost advantageous for the town to participate with Vineyard Wind to complete planned utility improvements along the route as part of this project. Furthermore, the new duct banks will congest the roadways and make it very difficult to install these utilities after their work has been completed. In order to participate with Vineyard Wind in this project, it is imperative that the design of the new sewer mains and the water relocations be completed as soon as possible. We have begun technical meetings with Vineyard Wind representatives. Once we have detailed construction drawings, we will be able to ascertain areas of responsibility and cost-share arrangements between and among the parties. Funding for this project will be primarily utilized for engineering consulting services, provided from the Comprehensive Water Management and Private Way Fund and Sewer and Water Supply Enterprise Fund reserves. The Comprehensive Water Management and Private Way Fund will provide $735,000, and the Water Supply Enterprise Fund reserves will provide $100,000. There is no impact to the Department of Public Works operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. Geez, I'm flipping so fast, I lost my page, page 12, excuse me. I'd ask for your votes to open the public hearing, please. I have a first and a second, open the public hearing, all those in favor, open the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? We're in the public hearing. Would anybody like to address this issue, please? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
So, I have a move and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Counselors, what's your preference? Any questions? I'm looking to my right. Looking good?
Yes, I do.
Please. Counselor Schnep?
Okay, I'm trying to unwind this request, because there's a lot in here in terms of design of roadway, utilities, ductwork, and also understanding how it, again, dovetails with some of the CIP funding requests that we approved last year. In particular, we approved the preliminary design for a Finney sewer expansion of $315,000, which I don't believe has begun yet, so how does that component fit in with this request?
So, the, this request is looking at searing areas that weren't included in that, that go down to Coveles Beach, but it also addresses the drainage and water supply needs as well. So, since they're going to be digging up the road, and those are areas that were targeted for sewer at some point in the future, it makes perfect sense that we work with them and get those pipes in the ground now, it'd be an enormous cost savings by doing that. And in fact, we'll be meeting with them as soon as next week, and some of the things, like the water lines, the sewer lines aren't there, but there are water lines there, so we have some money here to address if we want to upgrade those lines while we're in there, make improvements kind of above and beyond, but it's possible that when we get their detailed design, that they're going to impact our water lines to such an extent that it would really be their responsibility to move those lines at their cost. So, part of this money is really just make sure we have it so we can move ahead, but it's possible that we won't use it.
So, the $315,000 for the Finneys' expansion has nothing to do with this project?
Correct.
Okay. And this is design and actual construction work, or what?
This is just design work.
Just design.
As is the Finneys' work, that's conceptual design work.
And so, there's a time consideration for doing this design work because of the Vineyard Wind project?
Yes, because they're going to start construction in 2020, and we want to be ready so that we can utilize the road opening to get our work done.
So, what is the estimated cost of the work that we would do based on the design work? I mean, just a ballpark?
I don't have that figure right now, and unfortunately, my town engineer had to run off to...
She's back there.
Oh, okay. She was there. She's brackin' away.
She did move back.
Do we have a...
It was like 10% of the design, so it's going to be a one or a half, it's a plus and a half.
Okay, so, it's around $8 million.
So, how soon would the council be having to consider an $8 million request for the actual work?
Once we identify the conceptual design and the cost, and we nail that down more, then we would provide that information, so it would be likely to be later this year.
And would it be included in the CIP that is going to come out the end of February?
No, it would be a separate request.
Okay. I guess I share Counselor Rap Grissette's concern that without a larger plan, it's hard for the 13 of us, maybe at least for this counselor, to understand, you know, what we're jumping through, and again, I totally understand the time consideration, and I trust that this is a worthy effort, but it's hard to separate out what is sewer, what is water, what is, you know, road stuff that Vineyard Wind has to do, I mean, what are we buying for $835,000? It seems like a lot, for three, is it for 3.8 miles of this route?
We're buying the design for the sewer project that goes in the road where Vineyard Wind is going.
So, how many miles?
Four, four of the five miles.
So, it's a $200,000 per mile for design, okay. And it coincides with their design, I mean, is that, you're going to have to work with...
Yes.
There's no efficiencies from using their design to...
Well, we can't use their design, but we use, utilize the route that their design has resulted in.
The other issue was, it says in your background that the project does not propose searing the neighborhoods off this route at this time. So, we would be spending potentially $9 million to put the sewer mains in for eventual connection to, so it's, right?
Correct.
So, this would be a major investment for us to make. When are we at the council going to have the conversation about the impact on our citizenry in terms of what this means? Because, you know, we're able to tap our enterprise fund, you know, because it's a substantial amount, but $8 million, $9 million, all of a sudden takes $16 million in half if we go forward with this funding mechanism.
We will follow through with every step as they complete a step. We obviously have an opportunity to reduce the cost to run what I'd call the artery down to the water. It's an area that's been designated forever with the Red Lily Pond issue and that, so it seems to be an area also that if we did eventually tie to, that it wouldn't overreach for capacity in Hyannis by bringing it back to Hyannis. So, it's for those two reasons, the road opening and not exhausting Hyannis, that it's moving forward at this time. And this is the way it's going to go, it's, this is the way construction is. It would be, this is a long designated area for sewers, and this will be a great opportunity to get sewers into those neighborhoods. All right, I'm looking for any other questions from the side? I got a first and a second, did I get a second? Yes, I did. I got a first and a second to move the question, all those in favor of moving the question, 2019-069, as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions? Please record one abstention. Counselor Schnep, for the record?
Yes.
Okay, so, you're not in favor of moving the question?
I am.
Okay. All those in favor of 2019-069, please signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, go get 'em, tiger.
Dag one?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
I can't even...
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
That is 12 yes, one abstain.
Thank you very much. Next page, please, 2019-071, Old Business Public Hearing, Roll Call Majority. Vice President, please.
Yes, this is Old Business Public Hearing, it is a roll call vote by majority, item 2019-071, it's an appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $250,000 for conceptual planning and design of the first stage of the sewer expansion in Ktuit, as written.
Thank you, do I have a second? I heard a second, I believe, didn't I? Thank you, I have a first and a second, and let's have the rationale, please.
The possibility of the town utilizing Joint Base Cape Cod for a portion of its wastewater needs from the western part of Barnstable presents an opportunity to address specific wastewater needs in the village of Ktuit sooner than was anticipated in the previous work undertaken by the Water Resources Advisory Committee in earlier iterations of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. Previous thinking was that, under the intermunicipal agreement the town has signed with Mashpee and Sandwich, we anticipated to employ the concept of nitrogen trading, which would effectively allow Barnstable to pay Mashpee for an increased level of treatment in their portion of the Popanestet Bay watershed to meet the required total maximum daily load, or TMDL, while absolving us, Barnstable, from constructing wastewater solutions in that part of town. After further consideration, it became apparent that while the arrangement with neighboring town may meet regulatory requirements of meeting the TMDL, it would do so at the expense of, and without addressing, water quality issues in Shoestring Bay, which is a subimpayment of Popanestet Bay. Additionally, providing traditional wastewater solutions in the village will protect water quality in the Three Bay system and Zone Two protections for water supply wells. Under this project, the town will retain a consultant to begin conceptual planning efforts for further expansion of sewer into Ktuit. The effort is anticipated to include conceptual design scenarios, phasing recommendations, cost estimates, and public outreach. Funding for this appropriation will be provided from the Comprehensive Water Management and Private Way Fund, which has a current available balance of $16,447,139, and there is no operating budget impact as a result of funding this appropriation.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? I have a first and a second to move, open the public hearing, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, we're in a public hearing, anybody wishing to address the discussion? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Do I have a second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-071, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very much. Counselors, any questions? I'm not going to put it to a vote yet, any questions, counselors? Jessica Rap, Counselor Rap Grissette, please.
Dan, once again, well, let me just be clear, there is no sewer in Ktuit right now, so that we're not expanding anything, we're, this is to put sewer in that area, in the western part of the town of Barnstable. The other thing I have to stress is, in the RAC's map, the needs are great in north of Route 28 significantly, more than in south of Route 28. I will also say that I know of two treatment plants in that area, north of Route 28, that take care of a great deal, and pretty large development. I'm going to support this, but I'm going to say this again, I need to see, and I want to be, I want, I want the town to be putting forth our comprehensive wastewater management plan, and it was mentioned tonight about the town benefiting from SRF funds. We might benefit from those, but we're not benefiting at a 0% interest, we're benefiting, and anybody essentially can benefit from them for 2%, and that's a big nut when you start talking about millions and millions of dollars. So, without that comprehensive plan, we're not going to be getting 0% on our money, so I'm going to keep beating it, and I know you're going to, you know, be tired of hearing me, but I, I'm adamant about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and leadership is adamant about it, too. We're moving in parallels here. Any discussion from the side? Hearing none, I have a move the question, I have a first and a second to move the question, all those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I turn it over to the clerk for a roll call, majority vote.
Counselors, Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dag one?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
I ask your endurance to jump back to page 46, 2019-091. Give us a chance to let our Director of Conservation head off. Somebody ready to read? Yes. Thank you.
This is, New Business May Be Acted Upon by Majority Vote, item 2019-091, transfer ordering the amount of $30,000 for the treatment of the invasive species Fanwart in Bearspond, Senneville.
I have a first and a second. Rationale, please, good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, President.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Yes, so tonight we're before you. Usually I come in, in the, under decision packages for work on our lakes and ponds. So we're asking for this money to be moved, because we do need to do a treatment for Fanwar using sonar. And the rationale is that we, it's, the contractor believes it is best to do the treatment at the early time of the growth of the plants. The less herbicide would be needed, it's best to treat the plants with less biomass. Because what could happen is if the plants could die off, and we could end up having a worse algae bloom, and it could increase the amount of cyanobacteria. So we're asking for this treatment to start in early May, where other times when we do a decision package, I'm not able to use the funding until July.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you for enduring tonight as well. This may be acted upon. Do I have any questions from the counselors? Yes, down that end, start with the Counselor Beeden Bender, please.
Thank you, President Crocker. I just want to say thank you for, for moving on this. It's important, it's timely, and I also appreciate the fact that you're doing this in May. Last year, we had a similar situation. We were right at the height of summer season, and the timing of this is much more prepatious, if you will, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. I just wanted to confirm that the entire Conservation Commission is in favor of this move. I serve as a liaison, and I'm very glad that it was able to come forward tonight.
Thank you. Any follow-up down the center? Questions? Hearing none, I have a motion to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye. Any opposition to moving the question, please? Hearing none, make that unanimous. In moving 2019-091, the transfer order in the amount of $30,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. No abstentions. Please record that as unanimous. Our last two items...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Our last two items before we head for zoning if, and I'm going to ask the body to see if they're up for it still. We've had quite a night here, to say the least. But I'm on page 19, and I would ask Counselor Rap Grissette to move 2019-084A, please.
This is Old Business May Be Acted Upon, item 2019-084A, appointments to a board committee or commission resolved. Town Council appoints following individual to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Zoning Board of Appeals, Paul Pennard, from an associate member to a full member to a term expiring 6/19, as written.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote on 2019-084A for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Paul Pennard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as unanimous. And one more, Counselor Rap Grissette, please.
This is item 2019-085, reappointments to a board committee or commission resolved. The town council reappoints the following individual to a multiple-member board committee or commission for steamship authority port council, Eric Schufelt, as the town of Barnstable representative member to a term expiring 12/31/2020, as written.
Thank you, Counsel. Do I have a second? I have a first and a second. Any questions about the appointment on 2019-085 of Eric Schufelt? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote on the appointment of 2019-085 to the steamship port authority port council of Eric Schufelt, as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. And we have finished, believe it or not, everything except for 2019-042. That is an article that I will step down from, and I would ask that you consider the night hour and consider voting to go past 11 if you're so inclined. And whatever the body wants, we're certainly ready to help and handle it in the next round. I turn it over to the Vice President. Thank you. To go past 11.
Can I make a motion that we go past 11 in our deliberations?
Your second.
Roll call. So we have a motion to continue this meeting after 11:00 PM as required. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
No.
Neary?
No.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
No.
Tinsley?
No.
He never does.
Wallace?
No.
Beeden Bender?
No.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Flores?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven no's. No, no.
Mr. Vice President? Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Yep, Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion that we continue item 2019-042 to our next meeting on March 7th, 2019. I'm sorry, February 28th.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor? Opposed? We all do. It's too late.